All right, guys, are we ready? Let's see, we've got everybody on here. I think we're ready. Okay, it's a regular city council meeting for 6:30 PM Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. Meeting accessibility pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual city council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live on the city website, www.samamish.us/tv21, on our YouTube channel, or on Comcast, Channel 21, within Samamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. Again, on the city website, www.samamish.us/tv21, on our YouTube channel, and on Comcast, Channel 21, within Samamish only. Lita, would you do the roll call?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow. Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow.
I think we do have a technical problem. I was just told that the council was hearing us through my mic.
Oh, through Dave's mic.
Council members, can you hear me? Okay, we are thinking, did you hear the introduction of the agenda meeting, the call to order, and meeting accessibility from the mayor? Okay, then what you heard earlier, you probably heard her through my mic, please bear with us. We're trying to figure out why she's not being heard. She's going to try and switch. Thank you.
Can you hear me in here?
Is Karen talking?
This happened the last time.
Yes, I think so too. I'm going to mute my mic and have her try again. Your mic shows off. Yeah, your mic is off.
Yeah, I just turned it off.
Okay.
That's going to make this, watch this.
Oh, is it going to get feedback?
Yeah, that's going to make that go crazy. Okay, turn that on.
Check.
Okay, you guys, is that okay, or do you guys hear an echo? Do you hear me at all?
Oh, my gosh.
Hey, Mike?
I'm going to try going out and coming.
Nobody can hear us through the mics here at City Hall. We can hear them, but they can't hear us.
Was Dave talking through his iPad?
You could hear, yeah, through iPad, I believe he was talking.
Council member, she's going to log off and log back in.
They couldn't hear me either, though.
You know what? That's true. You could not hear.
Redialing in.
Talking either, could you, when she was trying to do roll?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I will redial in. Hang it, do you want to hang on, or just?
Sure.
Okay.
And you're hearing me because I'm talking through my computer, computer not using microphone on the dais. Trying to talk with Mike. I'm being told, yes, on YouTube, the public can hear, can hear City Hall.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio controls, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN.
It sounds like they might be having trouble with a couple devices there.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Yes!
Okay. That's work.
There you go. There you go.
I have to re.
Don't touch anything.
Just turn your mic back on now.
Read your text message.
I think it's coming, getting feedback through your iPad, maybe?
My wife just reported, though, that she's able to see and hear Karen on TV 21.
Check, check, check.
And hear everyone at City Hall, but not the rest of us.
We can hear you, Karen.
Check, check, check.
Check, check, check. Mom, did you say that the folks online can't hear us?
The folks watching TV 21 can't.
Oh, that's not that.
They can hear Karen and see us, but they cannot hear us.
So that means that whoever is broadcasting for City Hall on Channel 21 is not properly connected, meaning that's the rest of us.
Okay, they're checking it out.
By the way, does it echo whatever Karen says?
Yeah. Probably Dave, Rudette, probably needs to.
Okay, is that better? Okay, are we, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and my wife reports that she can hear everybody on TV 21.
All right. TV 21 is plugged in? Okay, so start it over. Let's do it. City Council, regular meeting, and at 6:35 Tuesday, March 20, March 20, March 16th, 2021. Meeting accessibility pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual city council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, the city website is www.samamish.us/tv21, the city YouTube channel, and Comcast, Channel 21, within Samamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. Again, on the city website, www.samamish.us/tv21, the YouTube channel, and Comcast, Channel 21, within Samamish only. Lita, roll call?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Odell. Councilmember Chris Ross. Councilmember Pamela Stewart. Councilmember Kent Trine.
Okay, next is the Pledge of Allegiance, and let's see. Councilmember Stewart, you're the one with the flag today, so want to help us with the pledge.
Okay, all rise, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council member. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second on the floor. Any discussion?
Yes, nonchalant. Madam Mayor, because of the time-sensitive nature, should we move the discussion for item number 16? Is there any way that we could move that earlier in the agenda, just to make sure we get to that? That's the ordinance for the tent city?
We are going to get to that no matter what, because I looked at it, and there's no way to avoid any of the stuff before it. So we're going to get to it. I promise. So we will, this is going to be a long night, council. We're just going to have to be, we're going to have to stick to it and try to get through it as fast as we can. Okay, we have a first, we have a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First up, we have emergency management. We have an update from Andrew Stevens. Is he online?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Wonderful. So, good evening, councilmembers, mayor, city manager. My name is Andrew Stevens. I'm the emergency manager with Eastside Fire and Rescue. Tonight, I would like to focus my report on the COVID-19 vaccine, its availability, and our continued efforts to provide greater access to vaccines for residents of the eastside communities. Right now, our only available metric for measuring populations who have had access to the COVID-19 vaccine are through the statistical dashboard provided by King County Public Health, which can be broken down fortunately by zip codes. So as of earlier today, here's what those dashboards were telling us. Among those residents in Samamish living in 98074, it states that 117.6% of those aged 75 or more have received at least one dose. 108% of those aged 65 and over have received one or more, and 26.8% of those aged 16 or more have received one or more dose. Now, among those residents living in 98075, or lower Samamish, or southern Samamish, 108.9% of those aged 75 or more have received one dose, 93.6% of those aged 65 or over have received one or more dose, and 28.4% of those aged 16 or more have received one or more dose. Lastly, among the residents living in 98029, which includes Quahani, but also a large portion of Issaquah, it states that 91.1% of those aged 75 or more have received one or more dose, 89.3% of those aged 65, and 26.8% of those aged 16 or more have received one or more dose of a COVID-19 vaccine. So as you can tell, there could be some discrepancies in the statistics that are being reported, which are represented by those over-doses of 100% or more. Or it could simply be that our current populations are greater than the baseline numbers that the county is using for those statistics. What I can also say is that if you are over 65 and have yet to access a vaccine, I want you to please let Eastside Fire and Rescue know. Our mobile vaccination teams are still serving populations within our service area, and while who we can directly schedule and deploy are limited to the population that King County approves, sometimes we are left with additional doses, and we can put you on a standby list. So if residents feel that they meet that criteria and would like to be placed on a standby list for just-in-time on-call vaccinations, I'd like you to please email covid@esf-r.org. Now, regarding the establishment of a mass vaccination site here on the east side, I'm happy to report that the site is fully constructed and ready to go down at Lake Samamish State Park. However, unfortunately, King County is still unwilling to provide a dedicated allocation of vaccine, citing both vaccine availability and a focus on more vulnerable populations in other regions of the county. And while I understand the limitations of the vaccine supply chain, our hope is that having a drive-through site capable of providing over 500 vaccines each day, already built, funded, and staffed independent of county resources, will encourage public health to provide vaccine as soon as more becomes available. With additional tiers of vaccine-eligible persons opening tomorrow, we're very aware that our residents, who will become eligible to receive a vaccine, will most likely struggle greatly in their ability to access one, or to find that appointments are already booked out for weeks to come. And with the state entering phase three next week, we are also very aware of the fact that with restrictions lessening around restaurants, sporting events, outdoor and indoor gatherings, there are going to be more and more opportunities for exposures, both for those who choose to participate in such activities, but also the frontline workers at these venues, who even if they are eligible to receive a vaccine as of tomorrow, will most likely not be able to or struggle to for some time to come. Therefore, we're going to continue to pressure King County Public Health for a dedicated allocation of vaccine at the Lake Samamish drive-through site, so that all eligible eastside residents have the same opportunity and access as residents of Seattle or southern King County. I believe it will take the continued advocacy of city leadership, elected officials, as well as our own residents, to ensure that an eastside mass vaccination site is supported, and hopefully through these efforts, we will see the Lake Samamish site operational and providing vaccine to our residents in the very near future. So with that, I will answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, we do have some questions. Before we get to the questions, could you please repeat what that email address is?
Yes, absolutely, and this will be shared on the city's website and on our Connect Samamish portal as well. That email address is covid, C-O-V-I-D, at esf-r.org.
Perfect. Okay, first up, we have got Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, Andrew, thank you for that. Obviously, we're all very anxious to have access to the vaccine. We all love to get vaccinated right away, but the statistics that you shared put us here in Samamish ahead of most places, certainly ahead of the state, and I think even ahead of King County. And I was trying to get the latest data, but last I checked, we are here in Washington and in King County distributing the vaccines pretty much as we get them. So isn't the challenge still just the numbers, right? Like, we just don't have enough vaccines to go around? And I, you know, I mean, we could certainly get some here on the east side, but even the message I saw from SCA is saying that King County is trying to focus any additional sites and any additional vaccines into the communities that have been, to date, underserved and hit harder by the virus than the rest of us. Are those all accurate statements?
I'd say partially, yes. King County is focusing their efforts on what they perceive to be more vulnerable populations. I do believe that we have extremely vulnerable populations here on the east side as well that warrant that attention. With discussions with King County Public Health, even with, they couldn't, I guess, guarantee an allocation of vaccine even if vaccine numbers increase currently. I asked them that question point-blank. I said, if you, what level does the county have to receive from the state for you to commit to the site? And right now, they won't do that. I also brought up the fact that currently, the only King County-supported sites are down in southern King County, and our residents don't even have access to schedule an appointment at those sites because they're not present for those zip codes. So our residents are having to go through private healthcare providers and very limited opportunities at the pharmacies, and while those are able to increase or expected to increase in the near future, again, we want to see the same opportunities here for all our residents, and even the, you know, say, an elderly person who is 80 cannot get a vaccine yet, they're not homebound, so we can't go to them via our mobile teams, so we're expecting them to possibly drive a couple hours down south or into Seattle and wait in a long line, when we have the ability to do this in our backyard. I think that's what the goal here is eventually.
Okay, thanks for that. Help me understand, so if our, if the number of people vaccinated in Samamish is higher than the number of people vaccinated across the state and across King County, then there's no reason for us to assume that we have less access to those? And while King County may not be offering it, I know that the Microsoft site is partnering with healthcare providers, and there's also, Lumen Field is offering it, so there are places that realize getting to downtown Seattle is not necessarily easy, but if I can't get out and about, then I probably can't get to Lake Samamish State Park either. So I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, I definitely want us to have access to it, but I also think that we need to be focused on the populations that have been hardest-hit by the virus and are so far showing that they are not getting the vaccine at the same rate. That will not only help those populations, but that will help all of us to combat the virus. You say that it's perceived that those populations are harder-hit, but it's not a perception, the data actually supports that, correct?
Yes, there's definitely portions of the county who saw higher case counts, higher hospitalizations, and obviously, there are factors, socioeconomic and demographic factors, that increase the vulnerability of, to this virus, or, you know, to the perception of, to the ability to receive healthcare. However, I think that that is a hard argument to make to the people in Samamish or Issaquah who have begun sick, lost loved ones, and spent the whole year basically complying with COVID mitigations and doing their best to comply with all of the non-pharmaceutical interventions to reduce our risk, that when vaccine allocations does become available, they're not going to be able to get it. If you look at our demographics, we do have a much younger population, and we do have, starting tomorrow, I guarantee you're going to see a lot of populations that are eligible and will not have the ability right away to get it versus other regions.
Okay, I just want to make sure that if we're going to go advocate with King County, that we make sure we're advocating for the right things and for the things that are equitable. So just from the data that you've shared, it doesn't sound like the folks in Samamish have not been able to have access to the vaccine, because we are still being vaccinated at a higher rate than the rest of King County. So I just want to make sure people are aware of that. I don't want people, I don't want to create a panic where none is necessary. I think that the vaccine is out there, it is available to those in Samamish as much as it is to anyone else. It may not be quite as close, and that may be more of a challenge. And I definitely think if people are struggling because they don't have transportation to the existing sites, that that may be a more efficient way for us to help those folks get the vaccine. So is that something that we've considered? Because I do think that peanut buttering the, you know, distributing the limited vaccine doses that we have to more sites may not be the best answer, and it may be easier for us to help those struggling with transportation to get that for them.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would say there is, if there's 500 additional doses that could be given to Lumen Field, and we're expecting the residents of Samamish and Issaquah to drive there, it seems easier to just simply allocate those doses here, and that way, the folks of eastern King County will not have to go all the way to downtown Seattle to get a vaccine. Either way, we are putting shots in eligible recipients' arms.
Okay, and I just want to clarify that I, and at no point in time did I say that I was not empathetic to anyone who's been struggling or who's lost a loved one here in Samamish. I just want to make sure that as we advocate and if we're going to bombard King County Health with requests, that we're making sure that we're asking for the things that will help us all, because we all need to get vaccinated to really combat this thing fully. And so I want to make sure we're advocating for the right things, and we're making the most noise for the things that are going to make the biggest difference. So, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Odell.
Thank you, Mayor. Andrew, thank you for your report. I just need to say that three weeks ago, my wife and I stood in line for six hours at East Gate, a line of 550 people, and it turned out that you had two of their shots. Fortunately, we were 196, 197, so we are getting our second shot tomorrow, and we'll be fully vaccinated. But Andrew, I did want to ask about the site at Microsoft. How is that working, and what kind of traffic are they getting?
Yeah, unfortunately, sir, there's not too much communication being put out about that site, because it's not a city-run or county-run site. It is a partnership between a few healthcare providers to provide their vaccine at this location in partnership with Microsoft. So in the briefings with public health, I'm not being brought up to speed on how those individuals are selected, and by basically, not appointment-only, but referral-only. I know they were targeting a lot of, some of the medical providers that were missed, some of the kind of phase-one, phase-one B eligible persons who were missed the first time around. I've not heard of that site being open to the broader public for anyone who is eligible to sign up. So I think it is being done on a referral basis. I know they are reaching out to some of the human service organizations to identify some populations who may have been missed. I think we're all trying to do that as well. But again, if they privately run sites, who unfortunately, I just don't have enough information on to speak further on.
Well, the site we went to is also privately run in the end. We were part of that lineup at Microsoft until they extended us, and then we went lucky elsewhere. Do they not have to report back to the state on how many they're giving?
They do, through waves, they do. Again, but that is not, that's privileged information to them and to the state, most likely protected.
Okay, that's very interesting. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to be sure that the full council is aware of the SCA meetings that they have scheduled with Patty Hayes, who is the King County Public Health Director. Because that happened this morning, and I was on there. I know Andrew and Zelia were both on as well. When I scrolled through, I just found out, because I thought, that's a good place to get updated. I mean, the one and short of this Monday meeting is that there isn't enough vaccine to go around. And one thing I think was notable from that meeting this morning is that there's a misperception about the leftover doses. When a bottle has been used, they cannot transfer that to another site. So once a bottle has been, you know, needle has gone into it to draw out some of the vaccine, they cannot transfer that somewhere else without going through a huge process. And of course, with the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccine, that's not something that they can really, you can't wait and do it because of the temperature that the vaccine has to be for. So it has to be used on-site, and that's why you see them just kind of saying, we have extra vaccine. Now, Issaquah, Mary LaPolly was on the call, and she said they have a list of residents. And she was advocating for, you know, hey, she was, you know, speaking to the Eastside Fire and Rescue ILA that we're in with the city of Issaquah and Eastside Fire on the vaccine site for South Lake Samamish State Park, but they have a list of people that aren't able to get out to the site, because they want to make sure that homebound, that individuals are able to access the vaccine as well. So I just wanted to make sure you all are aware that when there is extra at the end of, at one of these vaccine sites, they can't transfer that vaccine anywhere else.
Samamish has a list as well, that Andrew's keeping. Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, hey, thanks for the update, Andrew. And I just want to make sure there's a clear communication from the council that we're aware that this is a regional problem, but I know. But I know people who are having to drive from Sammamish, almost everybody I've talked to is having to drive somewhere else to get this. And I just want to make it clear that as a city council, I would like you to, or as a city council member, I would like avocation from you to try to get doses up here in the Sammamish to take care of Sammamish residents. And it's, although it is, again, regional, and there are other places, like you mentioned Microsoft, well, Microsoft is not specifically aimed at servicing, uh, residents in Sammamish. Uh, my job is to advocate for those residents. So I just want to make it clear, at least for myself, please advocate to get some vaccine doses up here and that our residents get taken care of also. Thanks.
Okay, and then, uh, Andrew, I just wanted to note that, um, of the people that I know that have had the vaccine, outside of the ones that I've known through, you know, my groups that I belong to for autoimmune disease stuff, um, they're, other than that, they're the ones that are, um, frontline workers. So they're your dentists, doctors, nurses, you know, all the people from the hospitals and clinics and everybody else. And we have an awful lot of those up here. Um, so we have an awful lot of those people up here. So that may be another reason why we have so many in Sammamish that are vaccinated, is we have a lot of those workers in the city. And now teachers. Mr. Treen.
Teacher, that's well, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions for Andrew? Okay, great report, thank you.
You're welcome, Mayor. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, next up, we have public comment. And pursuant to the governor's emergency proclamation, 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual city council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment may be accepted until 5:00 P.M. on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to the city clerk, l.hatchey@smamish.us, and the city council, at citycouncil@smamish.us. Verbal comment, up to three minutes of verbal comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 P.M. the day of the meeting. Phone number, 1-571-317-3122. The access code, 929-348-197. Lita.
Good evening. I see that we have three people who have called in to provide public comment tonight. I will unmute the callers in the order that they have, they joined the meeting. When it is your turn, you will hear an unmuted, automated voice say unmuted, and then you will have three minutes to provide public comment. Fifteen seconds before your three minutes is complete, I will provide a time warning. At three minutes, you will be muted. Please state, start your, your comment by stating your name, the city that you live in for the record. I will now unmute the first caller. Caller number one.
Good evening, City, good evening, City Council. My name is Rochino Farrell. I live on Saturday 24th here in Sammamish, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. Uh, tonight, we will declare April 2nd World Autism Awareness Day in Sammamish. Autism is a condition that presents challenges with social skills, repetitive behavior, speech, and non-verbal communication. One in 64 children have been identified with autism spectrum disorder in the U.S. When my son was diagnosed in 2008, the statistics were one in 110. According to a report on the CVC website, one in six children, which is 17%, aged between three and 17 years, were diagnosed with a developmental disability, as reported by their parents, in a steady time period of 2009 to 2017. This includes autism, and ADHD, cerebral, cerebral palsy, and blindness. Sammamish is a young city, both in its years and its founding and in its demographic makeup. Approximately a third of our city is under 19 years old, according to census data. So as a result of these statistics, I strongly encourage the city council to think of families like mine, living here in Sammamish, who live every day quietly, taking care of their child or their young adult with autism or with another diagnosis, and consider us when you're talking about public safety, housing, employment, public transit, and education. We need our public representatives to work with us in mind. Thank you so much for your attention tonight.
Thank you.
I will now unmute caller number two. Caller number two.
Good afternoon to the council. This is once again Stephanie Guevara. I'm a 14-year-old girl living in Sammamish, Washington. A week or so ago, I was walking my dog, Azora, and we were walking on Fourth Street on our way towards Metropolitan Market. And as we were walking and just about to reach the roundabout, I spotted a coyote to my left, standing just about 15 feet away from me. At first, I was in complete awe. It was perhaps the most magical moment I had ever witnessed. And as the coyote disappeared in some bushes, I thought, wait a minute, what was that coyote doing here? What was he doing in such an industrialized and residential area? And then I realized, he mustn't have much other place to go. We continue to build and industrialize Sammamish without stopping to think for a minute, to think of what will happen to the wildlife that lives here. If you can remember, we used to see much more wildlife here, especially deer. But now, as we expand our human territories and in doing so, take away from bears, where do you expect Sammamish wildlife will eventually go? Please, help me understand whether there will be room for wildlife if we keep on building homes and expanding Sammamish in these ways for ourselves. Please think about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now unmute caller number three. Caller number three.
Good evening, City Council. Paul Stickney here. Uh, I watched the, um, Sammamish Plateau Water Meeting on Monday for about the last half hour after they got out of their executive session, and they talked about, uh, sewage capacity. And the short story here is they're working on three different things. They have what they call a, a intermediate solution that they call I-4, which is roughly a two- or three-year process to last for 10 or 20 years. They also have a, another option that they were talking about that they labeled A-6. That would take about, uh, you know, 10 years to do, but it would serve all zone's capacity in the city. And they're also looking at some short-term hybrid, um, options, I guess you'd say. The other interesting things in the meeting is they're holding a special meeting on the 22nd, and typically their meetings start at 3:30. I'm not sure if this one does, but they're having, uh, Kathy Lambert in from the county. Then odds are everyone is aware of this, but their public hearing on their sewer moratorium is on Monday, March 29th. So they are looking for options interim and long-term for solutions, and they plan, and I think I understood, I'm not sure I heard this right, but I think a member is coming to talk to the Sammamish City Council on April the 6th. So I just heard those things the other day, or I guess yesterday, and I just wanted to share them. Have a good evening, and I know it's going to be a long meeting.
And yes, Mr. Stickney, you were right. They, we do have, um, some members coming to see us for the first meeting in April.
Mayor, that is all we have for public comment tonight, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for all those who called in for public comment. Um, the next thing that we have on our agenda this evening is that we have got an executive session, and this is for collective bargaining pursuant to R C W 42 dot 31 404A. And, um, are we thinking 30 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so it is 7:20, um, which would take us then to, uh, 7:20 to 7:50, I guess. Okay, so, um, we will be in executive session until 7:50.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, uh, city clerk here. I just wanted to let everyone know that, um, as Mike Sugg is not in, at City Hall tonight, I will have to disconnect from the one meeting and then join the other meeting, and then we'll have to reconnect back here later.
Okay.
Just to, all right, if people find themselves cut off.
Okay, everybody, we will, okay, with council back from executive session, I think we're all back. We are on to consent calendar. I'm looking for a motion for consent calendar.
Hello?
Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I can.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none, 7-0, thank you. Okay, presentations, we have two proclamations this evening. Um, both are very dear to me, so, um, how about if we have, uh, Deputy Mayor, would you please read one? And perhaps Mr. Treen, would you please read one?
Only if I can get them to download.
Ah, okay. Mr. Treen, uh, would you please read the World Autism Awareness Day?
Proclamation of the World Autism Awareness Day, April 2nd, 2021. Whereas autism is, um, uh, geez, that makes it a little bigger, sorry. Where autism, whereas autism is pervasive development disorder affecting the social communication and behavioral skills of those affected by it, and whereas, as more health professions become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in rates as high as one in 68 children nationally. And whereas, while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive early interventions, environmental accommodations, and support throughout their lives, they lead significantly improved lives. And whereas, individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure that
Muted.
...in safety and to support families' resilience as they manage the psychological and financial challenges autisms can present. Whereas, we recognize the challenge that people with autism face, we also recognize the unique strengths and perspectives they bring to our lives, and welcome their full contributions and participations in our schools, our workplaces, and our public facilities. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, and the mayor, Karen Moran, on behalf of the, uh, Sammamish City Council, be hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2021, as World Autism Awareness Day in the city of Sammamish, and urge all employees and residents, and those great teachers too, by the way, to participate in our municipality, uh, municipalities' National Autism Awareness Month activities in order to become better educated about autism and create, create a better community for individuals with autism. And by the way, thank you very much, Karen, uh, Mayor Karen Moran, for allowing me to read this. Um, I work with these special kids already and see their brilliance and their genius, and I just, I think the world of them, so please support this day, um, and support , uh, the city and those in our city who have autism. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Treen, Councilmember Treen. Okay, um, do you have yours up on your screen, Deputy Mayor?
Karen, your mic.
Andrew, unmute.
Uh, no, I, can you not, are you not hearing? You can't hear mine? Oh, no, not again.
Karen, we can't hear you.
Okay. Um, can you see if, ask Deputy Mayor if she's ready to read hers? Rita, or Rita, Lita, can you ask?
Deputy Mayor, can you hear me? No. I'm gonna have to re-dial in.
Okay, I'm gonna send up a note.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio
Counsel, um, but the system went down.
Do you know
Deputy Mayor, if you would read the proclamation?
Yeah, I can download them. They will not download in my house. I'm a volunteer. Just, um, please.
I'll go ahead and read that, thank you. The proclamation for World Down Syndrome Day, March 41st, 2021. Whereas approximately one in every 800, uh, 800 children are born with Down Syndrome, representing approximately 5,000 births per year in the United States. Whereas Down Syndrome is a naturally occurring chromosomal arrangement that has always been part of the human condition, exists in all regions across the globe, and commonly results in variable effects on learning styles, physical characteristics, or health. Whereas people with Down Syndrome possess, possess a wide range of abilities and are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles of the community. Whereas recognizing the inherent dignity, worth, and value, valuable contributions of persons with intellectual disabilities as promoters of the well-being and diversity of our communities, and the importance of their individual autonomy and independence, including the freedom to make their own choices. And whereas, March 21st, 2021, marks the 15th anniversary of World Down Syndrome Day. The date was selected by Down Syndrome International to signify the uniqueness of Down Syndrome and the duplication of the 21st chromosome, and is used synonymously with Down Syndrome. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Karen Moran, on behalf of the city of Sammamish and the Sammamish City Council, do hereby proclaim March 21st, 2021, as World Down Syndrome Day in the city of Sammamish, and encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, media, religious, and educational institutions, to join us in promoting awareness of Down Syndrome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
You hear us?
Okay. On to unfinished business. Unless we have
Maybe, uh, I don't know if, uh, City Manager Rudet still has his, uh, mic on, but we're getting feedback there, Karen.
We've got, I know it's not mine, cause I've got, my computer went off.
That's better.
Mine has been on.
Okay, so whoever it was, whatever, whoever did what? It's perfect. That's gone.
We can hear you fine now, Karen.
Okay. All right, so, um, the next that we have, and Mr.
Maybe, I don't know if City Manager Rudet still has his mic on, but we're getting feedback there, Karen.
Yeah, we've got, I know it's not mine, because I've got, my computer went off.
That's better.
Mine has been on.
Okay, so whoever it was, whatever, whoever did what? It's perfect. That's gone.
We can hear you fine now, Karen.
Okay. All right, so the next that we have, and Mr. Pyle is on, is the discussion on school capacity and concurrency. And Mr. Pyle, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor Moran, members of the council, David Pyle, Community Development. Tonight I have here with me, or I guess remotely, members of the school districts here to discuss with you the topic of school concurrency and school capacity. What we're gonna do is do a brief presentation from city staff, and then we're going to hand it over to the school districts, and they'll be sharing their screens for their part of the presentation. And then following their part of the presentation, we'll open it up to discussion and questions and answers at that point. So I'll go ahead and get started here. Do you make sure that I'm on the right screen? And just want to verify that everyone can see what I'm, what I'm presenting here.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. So, school concurrency rules are incorporated into the city's municipal code in Title 21A60090 through 21A6130, and in Title 2010230. These rules were adopted in 1999 upon the city's incorporation and have not been changed since. The concurrency rules apply to certain types of actions, such as a preliminary plot approval, which is a hearing examiner decision, mobile park, excuse me, mobile home park, which would be an administrative decision, a request for multifamily zoning, which would be a hearing examiner decision, building permit for multifamily housing projects that had not previously been evaluated for school concurrency, which would be an administrative decision. Project types that are exempt include building permits for single-family dwelling units, shelters for temporary placements, relocation facilities and transitional housing facilities, replacement of existing dwelling units, senior housing, and short subdivisions. The process that we have been following since my time at the city is typical to the administrative process that we use for most projects, and it requires that upon application to the city for a project like a preliminary subdivision, the applicant, the application is reviewed for completeness, there's a public comment period that begins with the issuance of a notice of application. The notice of application is routed, in addition to members of the community that receive the notice, to the school district. And there also, at that point in time, is a form that's provided to the school districts for their feedback, and information that is used in review of the project. At that point in time, school districts can provide comment, their, comment on the project or additional information about the, the capacity of the school, or the, the location in the city as to where the school, students will be, will be attending school. When the public comment period ends, staff then reviews the comments received in the district form. A staff report is issued with findings and recommendations to the hearing examiner. The hearing examiner then conducts an open record public hearing. At that point, the school districts, again, have opportunity to provide comment or information on school capacities, and the hearing examiner ultimately makes a final decision on the proposal for preliminary subdivision. There are some issues with the codes, the code section that we have in place for school concurrency. There are inconsistencies. For example, the definition of short subdivision has changed over time from four lots to nine lots, and that was changed in Title 19A, but it was not changed in the corresponding school concurrency section. There are changes to SEPA exemption thresholds that were made. Up to 20 residences are now exempt from SEPA. There are references to terms, processes, or permit types that don't exist. For example, UDP is a county term that the city has never had, as far as I'm aware. There are also dead-end references. For example, in 2010230, there is a reference to a set of criteria that simply don't exist. It's a dead-end reference. The code as it's currently written does not directly reflect the current organizational practices and permit process that we use, and it does not reflect the current collaboration efforts between the city and the school districts. So with that, I'll go ahead and stop sharing my screen and turn it over to the school districts for, for their presentation.
Hi, David, and Councilmembers, this is Barbara Posthumus, and I'm trying to turn my camera on, and, um, let me just make sure it's working. All right. There we go. Thank you for having us tonight. I don't have a formal presentation for this part of the agenda. David, I asked us to talk about, and I think someone's got their mic on, so there's two that.
Can you call it three and call it four, please, Mike?
Muted.
I don't have my mic on, I, I have a mute on my physical mic, so it's muted.
All right, there we go. I, David asked the district tonight, and I, Lake Washington's gonna share information about how we do manage our school capacity, how we manage our demographic changes and population shifts. And so I'll just talk about, I've been working with Lake Washington School District, I'm currently the Associate Superintendent of Business and Support Services, and I've been working with the school district for over 30 years and doing enrollment projections that whole time. And so I have a wide range of experience in this area and have seen the changes in, in Lake Washington over that time. So we, and in fact, in 1995, we did our first 15-year enroll, long-range enrollment projection. Plan 2020 is what we called it, and, and here we are. So we, in addition to our six-year enrollment projections that you see in our capital facility plan that we'll be talking about later, we develop a long, in our district, we do a long-term enrollment projection to, and that helps us assess our capital facility needs. We use a three-pronged approach to the projections. We project our, we use King County birth rates to project our future kindergarten enrollment. We use our cohort survival, which is a, looking at our current students and moving them ahead to the next grade, and how many we either gain or lose from year to year. And then we also track development in our each jurisdiction. Lake Washington is, has Kirkland, Redmond, and city of Seminole in our district, as well as King County. And so we are, we meet with each jurisdiction, including the city of Seminole staff, we meet with them on an annual basis, and meet with them regularly to discuss development projections, to look at comprehensive plans, and all of that information is incorporated into our long-term projections. We're tracking, in our district, over 80 developments. We call the developers and determine the development schedule so we know when the homes are coming online. We, we started working with a demographer, an outside demographer, flow analytics. They are, have also connected with city staff to look at zoning and look at developments that are coming on, and, and one of the things flow analytics said, they've never seen a district with such a comprehensive, detailed methodology for doing projections. So they were very complimentary of the work that we are doing. So we then use those long-term projections and determine our facility needs. Our district, along with, you know, I know Issaqua and SoCal Valley Valley, we have a facility advisory committee that we bring together. We brought a large group together in 2014. We just finished another group that finished up in January, and David Pyle was part of that committee, and they look at our long-term enrollment projections and our capacities at our schools to determine what facilities need to be built, and then make recommendations for how to finance those. And as, you know, we are, as a public school district, we are required to serve all students that live in our boundaries, and we go through a process to determine where we have capacity, when students come to us, and if we are, have shortfalls in our capacity, then we look at things like rebounding, we move programs around, we have remodel, we have used strategies to remodel our buildings, we add portables, we do something called a reduction of standard of service. So many of our new buildings are designed with art and science spaces. If we need more capacity, then we take those spaces to use for regular classrooms. So in between, when we can get a bond approved from our voters, then we're looking at where we need capacity and making those adjustments at that time. So I'll, I'll let Jake or Ryan add anything else that they'd like to add. You're muted. I can't hear you, Jake.
It might be in the settings where you have to reconnect to a different microphone. I've had that happen several times.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Ryan, we can hear you.
Well, Jake figures out his mic, I'll just, Lake Washington is a much larger school district, but what Barb has outlined is a very similar process that SoCal Valley goes through as well, as far as projecting enrollment, using an outside demographer, working with each jurisdiction based on projects in the pipeline to understand both short and long-term potential for growth. So, very similar to Lake Washington.
So while, while Jake is, I think, working on his microphone, we, we do have some topics to, to help with discussion following this point in the, in the evening's agenda item. So I'm happy to pull those up when, when we're ready and open it up to discussion. I just want to make sure that, that Jake's able to add whatever he sees fit prior to taking that step.
No, that would be
Madam Mayor, in the interest of time, why don't we do that and come back to Jake?
Yep, I think that would be great.
Karen, we're not hearing you, in case you're talking.
Oh, no, not again. Okay, can you hear me now? Can you, Rita, can you see if they can hear you?
We still can't hear you, Karen.
Can you hear me? City clerk? No.
Oh, no. Yeah, I'll try the chat box. Oh, okay.
Karen, if you could hear us, maybe you can just pop something in the chat so we know.
That is exactly what she's doing.
Okay, I've been suggesting she can hear us, and maybe we can have David Pyle pull up our presentation in a bit along, so while she's reconnecting to audio.
I'll go ahead and do that.
If she can hear us, I don't want her to miss if she can't hear us. Mr. City Manager, can you confirm that the mayor can actually hear us?
Yes, Deputy Mayor and Council, she can hear you.
All right, so David, maybe you can proceed with whatever you have to pull up.
So to help facilitate conversation, we, we put together three basic points for discussion. What is the best practice to ensure school capacity matches development? Should the city or the school district make school capacity determinations? And other opportunities for improvement? We, we as staff know that we're overdue for a rewrite of this section of our code. As pointed out, there are some inconsistencies within the code, some code references that, that lead to a dead end, and terminology that is outdated. There are also changes that have been made in other sections of the code that would, would warrant a rewrite, for example, the, the number of units in a short subdivision, and the number of exempt units under SEPA.
Okay, it looks like we have some questions in the chat box.
David, we've got a few
Yep.
Bring the general question.
Can anybody hear me?
David, would you need to, would you need a motion tonight then to rewrite the school concurrency?
As far as I understand, Kelly's here, joining us as well. She's more familiar with where this sits on our work plan. The concern we have is too many items on the work plan at one time, and capacity for us to move things forward. With the level of quality that we would, would want to aspire to, and the amount of time that we have to pay attention to it. So I, I think the question becomes is, is, it's obvious to us that this needs to happen, and we're very interested in taking it on. The, the question is, what level of priority is it, and where do we put it on the work plan, given the council's retreat and the work plan that was put together as part of that retreat?
The follow-up question would be, would some, it would either be we would replace something on the work plan, or that we would have to approve funding by the city manager to hire somebody to do the work? Is that our option?
I can jump in here. This is Kelly Hill, the Deputy Director of Community Development. What I would propose is, if we get a head nod from City Council tonight that you would like to make these updates to the development regulations, what we could do is go back, put a project schedule together, a timeline. This would need to go through planning commission and then come back to the council. Look at our capacity for staffing and determine if we'll need additional help, consultant help, or if we can manage this in-house. So if we get a head nod from Council tonight, we could do that work and bring that back, either as part of the manager report, or as part of a presentation to City Council. It would be your decision.
Kelly, do you have a time, a, a gestimate on what the timetable would, like, when you say bring it back, are we talking two weeks? Are we talking days?
No, I think that we should, oh, can you guys hear me now? Yeah. Excellent. I'd like to propose that we move this thing forward and reinstate the use of our school concurrency, 21A60090 ASAP, and I, and if that means that it needs to go out, then it needs to go out, but it, it shouldn't need, I'm hearing a lot of echo.
Kelly, turn your phone, Karen.
Okay, but there, it shouldn't need that much work, and if it needs, if it means that it can't be done by staff because their pallet is full, but I think this is something that is really important to the parents, especially as we're sending kids back to school. And it is something that is, you know, important to everybody in the community, this is one of the top items for, you know, the community at large.
I agree.
So do I.
Mayor, it looks like Jake Cooper has rejoined us.
All right.
Thank you, Karen, for bringing Jake up. This is really an important issue for the community. I mean, this is one of the four things that's really needing to be addressed before we move forward with much more development, so I'm in favor of fast action. Thank you.
And just, Jake, sorry, this is Barbara, Jake
Jake can get on, but he just says he's automatically muted, so unfortunately we're unable, unless someone can take him off mute, he's unable to unmute himself.
Okay, she's saying that, you know, she's saying he is unmuted, but that, our system is a mess. I'm not, I am using my regular computer versus the, the city hall system.
Karen, you've got folks in the queue. It looks like-
Okay, let's go down the queue and let me go back, now that I'm back on here, let me go up here, make sure, okay. Councilmember Ross.
David, can you go back to the last slide before the school district leaders were speaking? I wanted to hone in on that last section of the code. It currently does not directly reflect the organization practices and current processes and current collaboration between the schools. As on its basis, it looks like, does it sound like you're saying we're not following the process as you know, or what does that really mean?
Someone needs to mute themselves because I'm getting a really bad echo. So what, what I heard, I think what I made out there was, what does it mean that the, the organizational practice does not currently follow what the code says? The, the issue that we have is there are two pathways in our code as we see it. One pathway identifies that in, in making a determination in school concurrency, that the staff should review the school district's capital facilities plan that is on file with the-
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio controls, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or-
Capacity in the capital facilities plan, that then there are additional steps outlined in the code that identify things like phasing or investment plans that a developer can, can, can enter into some sort of negotiation and a process to figure out how they can bring their development online as school capacity is made available. So that, that's what I understand to be one of the paths. The other path that's identified in the code is in the hearing examiner rules in Title 20 that identifies that the hearing examiner can make the determination of school concurrency and school capacity as part of the finding for a, a hearing examiner decision. And that the hearing examiner is required to consider the concurrency criteria, which don't exist. There's a, there's a reference to a code section that's either erroneous or, or, and doesn't exist, or, or it's, it's, it needs to be corrected. But what, what that other, what that pathway is, is it's, it's, it's what we currently do. So what, what happens is we make, when, when application is made, we do public notice, we notify the school districts, we give opportunity for the school districts to provide comment about whether or not they have an issue with the development. And there's a form that's sent to the district to be filled out, which I believe was Exhibit 1 in the agenda bill for the evening. And then we collect comment throughout the duration of the comment period, and that comment is used in generating a recommendation to the hearing examiner who then holds a public hearing. At that point, the school district can provide commentary again on the project. Then the hearing examiner, in accordance with Title 20, makes a determination regarding school concurrency. And if there is, the examiner's finding is that there is not adequate capacity, just like the other section on concurrency, the examiner can then require that, that a phasing plan be established. So what, what we're up against is there are two pathways that, from what I can tell, the city, city currently follows the, the latter pathway, using the hearing examiner as the decision maker on concurrency. And I think the question is, is what is the pathway the city should be following? And, and who should be making that, that determination on whether or not there is capacity in a, in a school based on the number of units proposed in a development and based on the, the student generation factors in a development? I hope that helps clarify.
So, so in some, the code could be interpreted to follow two different paths, and the city is currently following the latter that you described.
That, that is my understanding. Now noting that, that, that the process that is used is the process that has been used since my arrival at the city in 2015, and as far as I can tell, is the process that had been used for many years preceding my arrival in 2015.
Okay, so part of the rewrite's really going to have to bring more clarity to the direction the city wants to pursue and that's going forward.
That would be helpful to staff.
Okay, then-
Sure, if you can hear me now.
Okay, so can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. So next I had was, there was a lot of things that I had written down that were just things that I had thought of that needed to be changed in the code. And I'm just going to go through a few of them. And one of them was the fact that, you know, we need to be using the numbers that the current data shows for what we have for high schoolers, what are coming from, you know, apartments, what are coming from townhomes, and, you know, use those numbers, some AMISH numbers for what is going into the schools. And we need to keep better track, because what's happening now is that, you know, how often do you actually hear back from the school district when you send them a form?
We do always hear back with the form. However, we, we, we feel that the form could be enhanced. Now again, that form is the form that's been in place since I, my arrival in 2015 and for many years prior to my arrival. I can't tell how many, but as far as I can tell, many years prior. And the form does not ask any specific question regarding whether or not there is adequate school capacity. So one, one simple procedural change that could be made to help us right now would be to include in that form, if the school districts are amenable to it, asking whether or not there's capacity. I, I think the, the question becomes for us as staff and for the school districts, I won't speak for them, but I will suggest that they might want to respond here, is who is making the determination around school capacity? Is it city staff that are required to decipher the capital facilities plan and make a call as to whether or not there is school capacity? Or is it the school district who wrote this capital facilities plan, who is then deciphering it and determining whether or not there's capacity?
That would be a good question, because I know every year they have a different number of classrooms depending on, because I'm working in the schools, of, you know, what they've cleaned out and what they've found and what they're using as a classroom and how many portables each site can hold. So do we have a microphone that works for this poor guy who's dying to speak to us? Does, does this-
Good evening, Mayor Moran.
Oh.
I, I think you can hear me now, correct?
Oh, excellent.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I actually had to use my iPhone and finally, finally got there. So I think what you have before you is a rather complicated issue. School concurrency is not a very common code set that is, I don't, I wouldn't say strictly concurrent, not a very common concept that is strictly enforced, I think, and schools do not want to be the arbiter of what housing permits are being given out in response to arts. So to that point, I think that most importantly, I don't know how you would, how, sorry, accurately track some of our student movement. So our school boundaries cross multiple municipal, municipal boundaries. And so we feed, a Samanish proper could go to several different schools, or occasionally we'll have kids from physical go into Samanish or vice versa. So I think that would be a pretty difficult challenge from the mathematical side, just what I can bring up. And I know my colleague has some other-
Yeah, I think, I think what they're looking at is more of what does, let's just take X school. So let's take, for example, Samantha Smith. What is the school itself hold? How many portables can it hold on-site? You know, so how many classrooms are available? How many kids fill those classrooms? How many portables are there? How many, how many kids can actually, you know, utilize that school? And that's, you know, that's what I think. So, you know, that's the sort of thing that I was looking at. And then, you know, how do we get to, you know, the portables? You know, the portable, the question I have on the portables is, you know, I understand that the portables are brought in as a usage because you, you grow the schools and you shrink the schools. That's how they're used, you know, as your population and the schools grow. But with that, you know, there should be that those, there should be permits that go with those so that we have some idea of, you know, when they're going in, when they're coming out, and, you know, how long-
You do, you do, trust me, you do.
Pardon?
In, in that case, you do. You have, we have permits for portables and they're either, you either know about them at the site development stage where we have pre-planned portables or when we actually permit you for a, you just to borrow. And in fact, you have a unique thing called a portable demolition permit, which I always joke about because it's a pretty easy to demo portable if you do it on-site. But, and so you're, in that case, you have accurate portable accounts, so. And capacity though is very tricky even for us on a annual basis, because as Barbara talked about earlier, sometimes we'll convert, you'll convert computer labs or art spaces into traditional classrooms, or we'll do an internal remodel, restructure. And so our capacity numbers can vary as you see from year to year in the capital facilities plan.
Yep, I'm, yeah.
I think the challenge, this is Barbara, and I'll just add, the challenge of having just the city calculate capacity is, one, you have to know what school the, the development is bounded into, and that's not in our capital facility plan. So you have to know which schools the students are projected to attend. So, and again, the capital facility plan is that year's capacity, but there are other, you know, again, projects that, that are maybe coming on, maybe we're doing program moves, and so the capacity could be expected to change. And so the city isn't going to know, necessarily know that just by looking at the capital facility plan at any one given point in time.
Okay. Okay, so the next question here is from Councilmember Odell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sitting here looking at this document, which should be familiar to Barbara Posthumus because we got it from you. This is a pictorial depiction of the capacities of each of the schools in Lake Washington's school system for today and going on a few, few years. There's an awful lot of red on here, which means that they are over capacity. So this has a couple of effects. One, we're going to portables, and portables are counted here, too. And even with the portables, a lot of these schools are in red. To me, that says you're running at a load factor that's probably not good for education or the kids, or for the staff, for that matter of fact. I know that my wife opened Blackwell, she was on the team that opened Blackwell in Lake Washington. Within a year or two, they had portables for Brandon School. Rachel Carson, I think, opened with several portables. Now, if you ask any classroom teacher, she does not want, he or she does not want to be in a portable for all possible unless it's a special situation, in which case they do. But I'm wondering, when you're using your generation rates and your projections, you say you use projections from outside experts, and I appreciate that, and I thought I heard you say that you got fairly granular, you went down to projections within Samanish. Do you use projections by school that add up to the total for Samanish?
Yes, we, yes, we do our projections by grade, by school.
Okay. Do you use the same generation rates district-wide or do you vary them by city?
So for our, what's published in our capital facility plan, we use an average, and for the calculation of our impact fees, we use what's required in the capital facility plan. But when we're doing our long-range projections, we are using a city by city student generation rate for both student families.
Okay, because I don't think Samanish would necessarily have the same generation rate as someplace else.
Correct.
And generation rates change over time as well?
Yes.
Yes, they can. I, I appreciate that as communities change. And how often do you measure them?
Annually, we update our generation rate.
And how do you do that? What's the basis for a generation rate?
The basis is we are tracking the development that has come online in the district the last five years, and, and that's what, and then we determine the number of students that come out of those developments, and we update the number of students each year, and that's the basis of our student generation rate.
Okay. Like the mayor, I think we need to have a deeper discussion on how this is all done because a apartment or condominium in one place may not have the same number of school-age kids in it as another place. And that will change over time and by area. And I think this is a source of real-time issues when all of a sudden on opening day you wind up with 75 more kids than you projected, which seems to happen regularly. I do agree that is probably best that if we talk, we talk to each other in the course of putting this together. But this is important to us because A, it's our kids, and your kids too, we're not taking away that. But also it has a major impact on things like, okay, what's the traffic on the roads in front of these places? And we've had some major issues in Samanish that way in the past. And it gets, it impacts our capital plans. So I am going to put in a plea to all three of you guys that at some point in time, we need to sit down and have a review of how this is done and is the old way of doing things still appropriate. It's not a question to speak. Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. I guess I have a lot of thoughts and questions here. First, David and Pio, I think in one of the very first slides, and this wasn't part of the agenda packet, so it's, we're kind of reviewing it here, if you could go back, I think it said that short plats are not subject to our code. Is that correct? And then of course, code is incorrect. It says that a short plat is four, when it's actually nine or fewer. Am I, did I see that right when I was trying to read this?
Yes, you did. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So short plats are specifically exempt from concurrency, and a short plat is defined as four units in, in the concurrency section, but in 19A it's defined as nine or fewer.
So, okay, so my first question is, I'm assuming staff is actually using our known definite class, which is nine or less than four, correct?
That's, that's the, that's what we use to determine whether you're doing a short plat or a long plat.
But when you're determining whether or not it's subject to Title 81A, about 130, are you using nine or four?
We're using nine.
Okay. So to that end, I support the idea that our code should mirror our practices, lest, you know, staff will come in, leave, whatever. We need to have consistency, and the only way you have consistency in the application of code is by actually applying the code. So I do support changing the inconsistencies that we had defined in the previous slide, which was changing, but I'm perplexed by the fact that we, that short plats aren't included in the first place, because we're going to see very few long plats come into Samanish. place because we're going to see very few long plots come into Sammamish anymore. Most of what we're going to see is on the short plot side. So it would make sense if it is, if I understand right, you said the hearing examiner is the one that is rendering the decision on whether or not there is capacity, which seems like an odd thing anyway. Did I hear that right, that the hearing examiner is determining capacity?
Yes, that's in accordance with SMC 20.10.230.
Okay. So if that's the case, then I think it would be imperative that short subdivisions were also included and not an exemption because it seems counterintuitive. We're not really going to have very many, if any, long plots coming into Sammamish anymore, which would render the entire code section, you know, not really applicable to situations that are transpiring on the ground in Sammamish. Now, that being said, I want to make sure that I understand, you know, this whole narrative or idea of school concurrency because while it may exist in Sammamish municipal code, its application seems to be outside of our realm and jurisdiction. So I do have a question for the school districts, and that is, at what point would or could you ever say, "We don't have capacity"? I mean, knowing that districts are, frankly, get money on a per-student basis, at what point, I mean, you're, if you accept a new student, you have more money, and so therefore in theory, you might be able to render more space for them. At what point could or would you ever, you don't have capacity?
Well, here's what I think legally speaking is, every, I, I know that districts can close to other districts, so Iskwa can close to Lake Washington residents, et cetera. I can close programs off and maybe reshuffle kids, but there is no way, I believe, in statute, federal or state, that I would be able to refuse public education to a resident that resides within our boundaries. I, I don't know how I would do that.
Yeah, and I understand that, and that's kind of why I'm not seeing the question. That, you know, I want to make sure that our goals as councils marry up to the reality of what can actually transpire on the ground. Denise, I saw you put your, being off.
And I'll let my lawyer actually speak for me.
On that side, but I am curious.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just thought I would elaborate on the point that Jake made and in response directly to your question. So Denise, if I'm I'm with Pacifica Law Group, and I work with all three of these school districts on various matters, including school concurrency, school impact fee related issues. What Jake is referencing is the paramount duty clause in the state constitution, and Washington is very unique. Washington and the state of Florida are the only two states that have embedded in the constitution that education is the paramount duty of the state. The paramount duty in the constitution is implemented through statute in the basic program of education, and then therefore delegated to each individual school district to comply with that statute. And so these districts are all compliant with that and are, and are very concerned about being compliant. The paramount duty clause has been the subject of a lot of litigation lately, primarily in the funding context. You sure have all heard of the McCreary litigation. That has been extended through the court's continuing jurisdiction in the capital context, so whether or not the state is adequately funding capital needs related to education. I will say that the paramount duty clause has not been fully litigated in the state of Washington, but it certainly is something that the districts are very cognizant about. And so that is the basis for needing to serve all of the students residing within one district.
All right, thank, thank you. So, anyway, getting back to whether or not we, you know, correct the inconsistencies in our code, yes, I think we should so that they reference our current practices and not the practices that we're practicing for the reasons that I mentioned previously. I also would eliminate the exemption on short plots just because I don't know that we're going to have any long plots in the future. And then, you know, Tom, Councilmember Odell made a comment relative to generation rates, and I think that's far more applicable to our next conversation, which is on concurrency. But I did want to mention that, yes, you, all you have to do is look at the multi-family rates for the Lake Washington School District and the Iskwa School District to know that there is a huge difference because the multi-family rate for an impact fee in the Iskwa School District is far higher than it is in the Lake Washington School District. So.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
I was going to go, go back to one, one of the issues that we have with the inconsistencies and with application is, one of the, the tools that we have to use at our, at our disposal is SEPA in, in these cases, right? One of the problems that we have is that the city has also set its threshold exemption for new housing units at 20 units for SEPA. So in, in many cases, SEPA would not be triggered, and therefore, SEPA would not be one of those tools we have at our disposal to use in a short plot. That's one of the challenges that we see because we're, we're limited in our authority to require mitigation measures. And if a project is exempt from SEPA, so that, that threshold was changed, I want to say in 2009. I did look it up, but I don't have the notes with me here. So, so that, that SEPA threshold determination, or excuse me, that, that SEPA threshold level for new residential units was raised to 20 units, and that's currently what is in our code. And because of that, if we were to try to, I, apply some sort of mitigation to a short plot, we would be challenged in doing so because of the level of exemption under SEPA. Just wanted to point that out.
So do we not have the ability to alter our, if we changed it in 2009, and I'm assuming that we, means the city of Sammamish changed it in 2009, do we not have the ability to change it today?
We have the ability to change it back. It's called a flexible threshold. And, and it actually might be beneficial to other issues we're dealing with if we were to lower it back down. So there are arguments both ways, and I'd be happy to have that conversation. And, and it is an option that you have. If you were to fine-tune these rules, eliminate some of the inconsistencies, you would, you would change the definition to short plot to what you want it to be. You would change the SEPA threshold level to what you want it to be, and you would make sure that all of the references within the code actually are, are current and, and point the reader to an actual section of code as opposed to a dead end.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I think this all sounds good. I just, I, I want to make sure that, you know, the council and the public are both completely eyes wide open that we can go and do this work. But if it's the hearing examiner that is rendering the decision ultimately on school capacity, he too is going to be held to that paramount duty clause in the state constitution, I suspect. And so I don't know that even if we change this, while what we're doing in practice will change, I don't know that it ultimately changes the outcome. And so I, can I get clarification of that, if I'm stating that correctly? From anyone?
Are you asking me or, or Denise? I, I can't, I can't speak to that. I'd, I'd have to defer to our city attorney.
Okay. Lisa, are you on?
Yes, I'm here, Kristi.
Were you able to hear my question?
I'm sorry, I did not.
Okay. So I was asking, since the hearing examiner is the person that renders the decision on whether or not a school district has capacity, and because the school districts are held to this paramount duty clause in the state constitution, will the hearing examiner also be held to that? In which case, they couldn't deny educating something?
I'm not, yeah, I'm going to hand it over to Denise in a second, but before I do that, I guess my answer would be yes. My assumption is the hearing examiner would be bound by the same paramount duty clause. Whether or not this particular hearing examiner we have is aware of that or not, I can't speak to. I have not had a school issue before the hearing examiner, but my expectation, assumption would be that yes.
Okay.
Would be the answer.
Okay. So I guess to, to answer the question that originally was at the top of this, which is, you know, if we choose to go forward in, in making some of these changes, like, the level of urgency for me is kind of determined by whether or not there's any change in the outcome based on what we do, and I guess cost. Because if we're reallocating budget to which we did not budget for, and it's not really going to change any outcomes, I don't know that I want to do a reallocation on budget to push something that makes no change. So I guess I'm looking for an understanding as to whether or not these changes, I, I think it's good to do. I think it needs to, like I said, our practice should be reflected in code. Because if we're not, if we're practicing something that's not in code, then we're not following the code, and that's not right. So it does need to be changed. We're in a moratorium, so this isn't being applied right now anyway. So I guess the question is, is how, how much time, knowing that it has to go through the planning commission, and how much money? And can it be, can we wait if we're in a moratorium?
So, so from the staff perspective, being required to open up the capital facilities plan, decipher the capital facilities plan, figure out the student generation rates, apply the student generation rates to the number of units, figure out which school is going to be, be the feeder school for, from the project, determine whether there's capacity, and then, and then keep a running tally if there are other projects within that school area, and then also have to deal with the fact that the school district is possibly changing the enrollment at that school in the following year or has plans for additional capacity is extremely challenging, and, and I, I would.
You also have to track who moves out. Don't forget you have to track who moves out on a monthly basis.
So, so there, there are challenges with this, and, and it puts the staff in a position, I, I would say, of, of trying to keep track of this is extremely challenging. And we would really want any code that we have to clearly lay out what the responsibilities of staff are so that the, the process is, is well-established, and it would also identify what information we would get from the school districts and, and how ultimately that, that decision or recommendation to the hearing examiner would be made.
Okay. Sounds challenging.
This is Kelly Hill, the deputy director. I just want to answer a question that's been asked a couple of times. What's the timeline to take code updates through legislative review? Minimum, absolute minimum, if we can get through the process, and this is just administrative changes? Six months. That is research, that's, that's writing agenda bills, getting to get a presentation, that's two meetings with the planning commission, two meetings with the city council. That is a six-month process for a project that is just administrative changes to the code. So just wanted to answer that question before we continue on.
Councilmember Stewart.
Great, thank you. I'm going to ask a couple of questions that I think have already been asked, but the audio's been a little bit challenging at times, so I just want to make sure I heard correctly. So the student generation rates, you update them every year, and you use a city-by-city number in those. Is that correct?
I'll, I'll jump in, and then I think Barbara or Jacob Ryan can also discuss. The student generation rates are updated every year, and their primary use is exclusively for purposes of calculating a school impact fee. They are done across the district so that they can feed that one-size-fits-all school impact fee, which we'll talk about next. In addition to that, each of the districts are doing enrollment projections, in most cases using the assistance of a demographer, doing development planning. And I believe Barbara had mentioned in her testimony that that is more city-specific, city-by-city. I'll just turn to them to clarify that.
Yep, that's correct. That's a good summary, Denise. Thank you.
Right. So we're, so we already are, I mean, to the extent that you guys can accurately predict how many people are going to move out, and you're working with developers, you're working with the cities, you're looking at all the data that is available to predict the number of students. So it's, and, and correct me here if I'm wrong, but at least a couple of years ago, the last time we met, you guys are usually, at least I know Iskwa, and I'm sure like Washington you might be too, but you guys are pretty darn accurate in your estimations of how many students you're going to have in Sammamish. Is that correct?
Usually, except for COVID.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so outside of a worldwide pandemic, you're pretty good at predicting your school numbers?
Correct.
Okay. And I just want to get a sense of that. So, so I guess, I'm not sure, you know, kind of where we're going with this, but what I, what I would imagine is that you guys are the experts at this because this is what you do. And so I'm not sure, you know, David, you asked a couple of questions, and one of them was, should the city or the school district make school capacity determinations? I'm not sure why we would usurp the school district in doing their job. And, and so I'm not sure why we're even asking that question. David, is that, I, I'm not sure. Can someone clarify that for me? Because I would think that this is, in fact, the school district's job, right?
Because one of the paths currently in the code found in Section 21A 60090 through 21A 6130 indicates that it's the city staff that should be making that initial determination of school capacity.
Got it, okay. So my opinion there, for whatever that's worth, is no, we shouldn't. We have experts who do this for a living. This is their job, so we should rely on them. Wouldn't it also be the case that whoever makes that determination would still be held to the paramount duty clause? So whether it's the city, the hearing examiner, or the school district, that we're all going to be held, it's in the state constitution, so it wouldn't matter what entity makes that decision, correct?
I'd have to defer to the city attorney.
Lisa?
Yes, the answer is yes, as I stated before.
Okay, I wasn't sure because I know Kristi asked specifically about the hearing examiner, but even whether it was staff or whomever, we'd all have to, okay. Thank you. And so the other thing is that Tom Flumber Odell referenced one of the items in the packet that showed the capacity numbers, and he referenced the fact that there's a lot of red. One of my questions is, it says permanent capacity and permanent differential. So does that mean the building capacity and that's not including the portables? Is that correct? Or can you clarify? Maybe, maybe I should ask the question differently. Can you just walk us through what those numbers represent so that we all understand these numbers the same?
And this was a Lake Washington document.
Yeah, page 125 of 294, I think, in the, the packet.
Let me pull up the page.
Yeah, sorry about that. I don't mean to put you on the spot. But I, I think it would be helpful for everyone if we kind of understood what the numbers represented.
That's fine. And my computer, just my Acrobat reader just froze. Hold on.
David, is that something you might be able to pull up and share? And then that way, the public could see it as well? I hate to ask you. Sorry to put you on the spot, too.
Yes, yes.
So let me just put everybody on the spot. Here we go. Sorry.
You go ahead and share my screen.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's, if it's coming up yet or not.
It is, yes. Thank you, David.
Thank you. So we have two capacity numbers. Our school districts have two capacity numbers, and permanent capacity is our physical classroom, building capacity, and then total capacity does include in, uh, portable. So we show both, our permanent and total capacity, and then you can see the enrollment. And again, this spreadsheet was based on, was done when we had our February 2020 projections, so a year ago. And, and then we show the comparison of current, the permanent capacity differences and total capacity differences, and then we did the same for 2024, 2025, and for 2029, 30.
Okay. And the assumptions from a development perspective in Sammamish for those future projections, does that assume, what, what are those assumptions that you have in there?
It assumes the, the current, all current development that was in the pipeline is included in that, and then it also includes the Sammamish, the comprehensive plan, which included the Sammamish Town Center project. It doesn't include any delays due to, you know, the current moratorium or things like that.
Okay, so that would mean that those 2024, 2025, and the 2029, 2030 numbers include some or all of the town center being built out based on zone capacity?
Correct.
Okay. So that's not necessarily, so it's, again, it's. So that's not necessarily, so it's, again, it's within the pipeline, plus sort of the zoned capacity and the comprehensive plan, which the current comprehensive plan has some pretty big numbers in there, which is why that's partially what those projections show. But I would assume also that you then use this to help you with your school bond proposals to know where you need to, to try to build schools and get bonds to build additional schools, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. We take, again, that's why we're meeting with our cities, our jurisdictions, on a regular basis, so to provide information about future development and what's in the comprehensive plans, so we can include those in our future projections, and then plan for our facility needs in the future, and plan for future bonds.
So if we had suddenly a much lower number in our comprehensive plan, you would adjust that number down, and if that, then that could change whether or not you plan to build additional schools in our area?
Yeah, we'd have to analyze the changes to the number of developments that are projected and determine how that impacts the future enrollment growth.
Okay. And then if those, if those housing units, if they don't get built in Sammamish, but say they get built in Redmond, or in the case of this school district, they get built down in Issaquah, you're still going to have those students in your school district, it just means that now you're probably going to do some boundary changes, and possibly build schools in those other areas. But you're, you're, would you, I guess the question is, would you, would you have one city be way overloaded and another city be at or under capacity, or would you change the boundaries to try to make them relatively the same?
We do all of the above. So we, again, it depends, because you can't, you know, if, if you're over, I'll use a very interesting example. If we're overcapacity in Sammamish and undercapacity in the Oneida area, I'm probably not going to be busing students from Sammamish to Oneida, right? So that's an extreme example, but, so we're going to do both. We're going to look at the, and that's kind of what I described at the very beginning, we're going to take a look at where, where are capacity needs. If we don't have a building that is opening up, or we haven't, you know, you know, haven't had additional classrooms, and then we're going to look at our options. Do we have the ability to rebalance, to solve the problem? Do we have the ability to add portables? Do we need to reduce the standard of service by using, converting art, art rooms to classrooms? Is there a possibility that we can move a program? So all of those things are considered as we're looking to balance enrollment across the district.
Well, Barbara, and don't forget, our biggest problem is where we can find land.
Yes, thank you. So, yeah, I mean, part of, go ahead, Jake.
We don't, I mean, to be honest, I, I don't, I have six municipalities. I mean, a lot of my schools cut right through different city municipalities, so, I mean, are at different boundaries, so, I mean, I don't, I don't really, I don't usually look at my enrollment projections by city, to be honest. I just do it by, by current attendance areas.
Yeah.
So that's just a little different than Barbara does.
Well, and, and again, I, this, this is broken up by what we call our feeder pattern or attendance areas. So it's not just, these are not Sammamish schools, Redmond schools, you know, Lake Washington isn't, you know, so Lake Washington and Oneida are both in the city of Kirkland. Many of the schools are. So, but yeah, I mean, that's the other piece, is when we're thinking about new development, you know, one of the things that we can, that we want to partner with our cities on is just making sure that there's, you know, developable land available, and, and making sure that, you know, we can permit the new buildings when we're ready to build them, too.
Great, okay. Well, thank you very much. So again, just to summarize, the numbers in the future projections assume, and again, you don't have all the details in front of you, but they assume what our comprehensive plan said, which would include the, the town center being built out. So I appreciate that, because I think that's really important, that people recognize that those numbers are there, because that's assuming our full-on development of the town center to, I think it's 2,000, David, or 2,200 units in total?
I believe the comprehensive plan identifies 2,000 units in the town center currently.
Great, okay. Very good. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have councilmember Gamblin.
Hey, thank you. So question for you, on the, on one of the initial slides you showed, David, you showed the, basically the flow chart of how the city staff is making decisions and contacting school districts. Do you have that available?
There you go. Thank you so much. So this is the process that you're looking at. How does exactly does the staff provide a review form to the school districts?
Yeah, so there's, there's two elements that staff are supposed to be looking for. One is to communicate with the, the school district that this development is now underway in review, and that it is on the books with the city as a pipeline project, so that the school district may then register it within its database as a project that is moving ahead. That's one point to the communication. The second point to the communication is that with, under safe routes to schools, and under understanding whether or not the students that are generated from the development will be bused or will be walking to school, there is a bit of a different requirement with regard to infrastructure and analysis that goes into safe routes to schools. So, so really, it's, it's, the purpose of communicating with the school districts is twofold. One is to make sure that they are aware of the project, and if they have any concerns about capacity or about the, the timing of the project, then they, they would take that opportunity to let us know about that. And number two is, we're asking them to complete the form, which includes information about where the students will be attending school, and whether or not they will be walking or busing to the school.
Okay. How many times have you had communications back from the school district since you've been there?
We almost always, as far as I'm aware of it, receive the, the form back from the school district. However, in my time here, I am, aside from the San Tony Rezone project, I am not aware of the school district providing notification to the city that there's a lack of adequate capacity, or that there's inadequate capacity in the schools where the students generated from the development would be attending school.
Okay, so you've never had a capacity return, then coming back saying, we're showing that this district or this area is at capacity. Do you ever compare that to the school's current capacity publication that they put out every year, the report, to see how that jives?
Do you mean the capital facilities plan?
Correct, yeah. It shows their yearly report on the capacity, the one we were just looking at.
Yeah, so, so since my, my arrival at the city in 2015, I'm not aware of, or have I heard of, staff, prior to my arrival, doing an analysis of capacity or looking at the capital facilities plan to determine whether or not there might be capacity at the, the schools that the project would generate students into.
Okay, so we've never had a, a notification back from the school district saying that, yes, this is at full capacity, responding to the questionnaire? We've never looked ourselves to see that? So also on the second direction, with the hearings examiner, looking at capacity, has the hearings examiner ever come back and said they've looked at capacity, you determine that the, a development feeding into that school, or into that school, or into that area? Have they ever come back and said that it's at capacity?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so the two, the two routes that we have for determining whether new district or new developments are being, do they indicate, do they give you any indication, David? Do they come back and say, yes, we can, the capacity can handle it? Do they come back and say that, no, it can't? Or do they come back at all? Do we have a positive notification?
So, so to be clear, on, on the communication that occurs between the city and the school district, the city's questionnaire, which I think is included as exhibit one to tonight's agenda bill, does not include a section on capacity. Instead, it includes questions around which schools the students will be attending, and whether or not they will be, be being bused to the schools. So the, the issue there is that the, the form that is being used does not help in that process. Further, the communication that is provided to the schools also comes in the form of the notice of application, which is the standard notice that any neighbor or any other agency would receive. So it's not also prompting that, that response from the district. It's not, it's not a, 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 a direct request to the school district to tell us whether or not there is capacity in the schools in that area. I want to be clear on that. And, and that is an area that we feel as staff should be improved, and it seems that, that what the hearing examiner is basing their decision on is the public record at the point where they are presented with the recommendation, and following the closure of the public hearing, where all of the public testimony has been delivered on the issue. And if there were concerned residents, or if the school district was concerned based on seeing the notifications of the project moving forward, and they were to provide us with testimony, or with, with letters, public comment on adequacy of capacity, then that would be something the hearing examiner would consider under that section, I think it's 2010, 230, in the city's code.
Right, but as you're saying now, that's really, that's a hole. They're, they're really not providing it, the, the hearings examiner is not really looking at it. As the school district said today, they said, school districts do not want to be the arbiters of permits being issued. It doesn't sound like there's a high level of interest. My question is, why does this even go to the district or to the hearings examiner? This evening, they said they're usually very accurate on predicting school numbers. So we have those school numbers, we have those predictions, we know they're very accurate as per their statement this evening, we know that they really don't want to get involved in the permit process, but we are interested in that. So wouldn't that seem to indicate that we need a separate process? If we're not getting responses back from the school district, even when developments are going into areas that the schools are already overcrowded, and the hearings examiner is not coming back and saying that we're having a problem with this, and yet the numbers are very accurate that we already get? So why can the city not look at it itself and say, here's these very accurate numbers, we can make some determinations?
That's, that's a great question, and I, I agree with the, the sentiment around there being a gap, and from what I can tell, there are two paths in the code as previously described. One would be reliant on the hearing examiner making that decision, the other is directing the staff to make that decision or recommendation. So what, what we would like to do is to bundle them together for one clear pathway, and, and clarify within the code what the steps are. Perhaps there's an interim measure that could be applied. But, but I do, I do agree that, that there historically has been a gap. I don't know where it started. I do know that that was the process that has been used since my arrival at the city and many years preceding my arrival. I, I don't know where that changed or why it changed, but, but I can, I can say that I do agree with the fact that there is a gap, and there, the, the communication that has been historically directed to the, the school districts is, is not one that is facilitating the school districts providing that response. So, so, you know, to, to make sure we're clear on that, that the communication is happening, but the clarity in the communication and the information that's being asked of the districts is, is wanting, right? We're, we're, we should have and could have been doing more in that regard.
And when we, do we have that flexibility at the city to be looking at what we desire there? And again, I'm not getting on the districts at all, they're their own entities, but they've said already this evening, they really don't want to be involved in this permitting question. So we have accurate numbers, we have the districts which are not highly interested in becoming, I think it was said, the arbiters of permits being issued. So in lieu of that, I believe the city needs to step in. City needs to set its own concurrency plan up. Again, we have highly accurate numbers to begin with. Why do we need the, the, the school district staff to respond when we have accurate numbers? Why do we need the hearing examiner to respond when we already have accurate numbers? We already have a code on the books. It would seem fairly straightforward to take these accurate numbers, apply them. And if you look at the chart that we had for the school capacities already, we're not looking ahead and saying, well, let's assume that the town center gets built out, and that's what's going to put us over capacity. If you look at that chart, we're already overcapacity. So given that, if the city was to come along and say, well, we're going to build some new developments, I'm not convinced at all now that the steps that are going to be taken are, are going to be what the council is looking at, and I can't speak for the whole council, I can speak for myself. So what I believe we should do is, we should be using the, the numbers that are already projected, the accurate numbers already given to us by the school district, we should be applying our concurrency code that we already have, and I, I think that should be turned on, be active, and we should go ahead and start applying that immediately. If we need to tweak it, and we need to adjust it, then that's what we do. We need it, and we, we can adjust it. But we have all the pieces of the puzzle that we need to pull the trigger on this, and make sure that our school capacities are not overrunning what they should, due to the city over permitting, over permitting, and putting more students in than the school capacity has to handle. So that would be my recommendation. We have a current code, reenact that code, put it in the policy that it is to be applied to every new permit that's put in. And again, we have accurate numbers, apply the numbers we have from the school district. If it needs to be tweaked or needs to be updated, let's enact it, let's get it updated, and let's get it up and rolling. So, thank you.
Well, I couldn't agree more, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna reiterate and go through everything you said. To me, we already have this on our books. This is not about the growth that's going to come from town center, this is not about anything like that. This is about the kids in our schools. This is about transparency. This is about that, I mean, I'm going to go through the fact that the, the district cannot and should not ever turn away kids, they can't legally, and they shouldn't. I've been on two of those boundary committees, and they're not, they're not great committees to be on. They last a long time, you get a lot of nasty emails, and you know what? Parents don't like them at all. So what's going to happen is what they, what they do is they, you know, they just push everybody over a little bit. That's their job, is to make sure that they have room for the kids. But it is their job, I also believe it's the school district's job to know the capacity of their schools. And it is their job to tell us exactly how many kids can fit into a school. But it is our job, then, to make sure that we don't overfill those schools. And that's where the transparency comes in, is it's our job to be transparent about, when we are taking in new developments and stuff, about the fact that we are going to be overfilling a school, and we are going to be, hey, this is what's going to happen, is, you know what? Probably some kids are going to be moved. I think that's our job, that's on us. And I think that, you know, that is what I think that code was really all about. I don't know why it would have ever had exceptions for single, single-family homes. That seems really odd to me. I could see where they would be bundled in groups of 10 or whatever, but to, to exclude single-family dwelling, that seems really odd to me altogether. But I do believe that it was in our, it was in there for a reason, and I think it should be reinstated, and I think it should, we should take the time and do it. To me, it's important, it's important for our kids, and it's important for our parents. And it is one of the things that was in our code to start with, and I think there was a darn good reason for that it was there. And with that, I'm going to go to Mr. Odell. Councilmember Odell, you are on mute. Councilmember Odell, you are on mute.
I'll get to any of this yet. I hate for us to be in Washington comparing ourselves to Florida. I've lived in Florida and frankly, they're not doing a very good job either. But the question I have, one for Jake, and that is, does Issaquah and also the Valley District have a chart that's comparable to the one that David showed us and then I showed?
I have something fairly similar to that. Not as pretty as Barbara's, but I could probably put something together.
Okay. I'd like it if you shared with us.
You bet.
Okay. And is Ryan still here? Maybe not. Okay. I want to go to the questionnaire that was submitted by Lake Washington along with the chart. And on the second page, item number four, is there a line between the school district population projections and the city's comp, complaint growth targets? The answer was, and I'm going to read to you, "Information regarding enrollment capacity is based on current town center planning and housing assumptions. Currently, many of our schools are at or over capacity, even with new, recently completed new and expanded school projects. The core infrastructure at our schools is overtaxed and many of our schools simply have no space for additional portables. Now, he proposes a way of more intensive development that currently planned for could significantly impact the district's capacity challenges and further compromise our ability to support the city's plan to promote growth." And I got to add parenthetically, not to mention the quality of education. And further on down, by 2029, 2030, the elementary schools in total will be over capacity. The middle school will be over capacity and the high school overage crucial capacity. So, I agree that, I think this is something the council needs to get into. We have to figure out a way with, work with the school districts. But this is something that I'm sure our residents and people who were sitting at just school would appreciate us doing. So, if there's a work plan issue, I suggest we go into the work plan and figure out what can be slid to the right to make room for this.
Councilmember Trane.
Yeah, I just want to echo or agree with my fellow council member, Ken Gamblin, Mayor, Karen Moran, and just say, there's no need for us to wait six months to get this done. The information is in place. We should be able to move this forward as quickly as possible. And as Councilmember Tom Odell just said, is if we got to make room in our work plan, let's get this taken care of. Let's get this in place definitely before the end of the school year, which is June 23rd. Should be even done before that, but there shouldn't be any reason why we can't get this done by June 23rd. And then the school districts would know going into the summer exactly what the city's going to be doing and how we're going to handle our permitting of any new development. I do understand where the deputy mayor's coming from that we're under a moratorium and so there's going to be a lot of stuff that's coming through. But I should fully aware is that we allow single family housing units to be allowed to be coming through. And so, the mayor's already talked about that and how that might be able to be handled. So, with that being said, I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So, I'm going to be pretty blunt with my statements here. First of all, the capacity has become a relative term. It really has. We all know, sitting up here, and so do the school districts, their schools largely are over capacity. If you look at the number of spaces in their, in their schools, and then you look at how many students they have in brick and mortar, they are over capacity. Now, what I will tell you is I had a conversation with the former superintendent of the Lake Washington School District when I was asked to support a recent, I think it was either their capital levy or bond that they ran. And I said, "Hey, look, what I'm hearing from parents over Inglewood Middle School is that the school is so full." They call it, the students call it zoo time between classes. When classes are, they're between bells in different classes, they come out of the hallways, they can barely move. The school is so full. And she actually told me, she's like, "No, we're not at capacity at Inglewood Middle School." And I said, "Please explain." There's a difference between the penciling in the back room, which is very similar to the road capacity and concurrency we have as a city, as to are your roads full or are they not full? You go back in the back room and you change what concurrency is and suddenly they're not full anymore. Well, the Lake Washington School District essentially did that with Inglewood Middle School. They changed faculty rooms into classrooms and said, "See, we have more seats. We have more room. We have more capacity inside of our brick and mortar building." So, this is what I mean by capacity is a relative term. The schools are making new capacity, whether it's with a portable on their grounds and some schools frankly, like Creekside Elementary are out of it. They can't even put any more portables up, they can't put more portables on their property for Creekside Elementary. And Jake, I'm sure you're correcting it. I'm wrong there. But my concern is that we all, I'll speak for myself here. I'm very concerned about our schools and how overfull they are. I mean, let's just look at the reality of the world we're in. We're in the middle of a pandemic, that some of the schools can't open, they can't hold their students back in because they can't spread them out enough to make it so that they can get back in the classrooms. And that is because they are overfull. So, you know, my underlying question here is, what's going to be different? If we call ourselves the determiners of school concurrency, I, I'm concerned that we're also going to be held to that paramount duty for the state of Washington and we won't be able to say, "Sorry, this school is full." And that's my real concern. I don't want to waste our time. I don't want to waste taxpayer dollars on an outcome that is no different. And it's frustrating for all of us sitting up here because we all know those schools are full. They are full. All you have to do is look at all the red bears. But my other concern is that if we push this forward, and I'm just being realist here, is that if we say, "Okay, City of Sammamish is taking this on," we're going to say, "Oh, you're full." Look at the numbers for Inglewood and Evergreen Middle School. Here's what the Lake Washington School District is probably going to do. They're going to read boundaries. They're going to take some students from City of Sammamish. They're going to go put them over Evergreen, which is not full, and they're going to say, "See, we're not at capacity at Inglewood Middle School. You can keep going." And the numbers will shift. And that is my concern about relativity to what is capacity. And it's frustrating because I think the idea behind the Growth Management Act has been lost, right? We, as a jurisdiction and the school districts, know the reality of what's on the ground. And the GMA simply doesn't reflect the real world that we all live in anymore, and it needs to be revisited. The fact is, is that we shouldn't be able to be forced to cram more kids in the school just because, right? That doesn't actually speak to this paramount duty of educating our students when we can't actually educate them and they're sitting at home behind computers. So, you know, my, my underlying concern is that I want to do this. I just want to make sure that we can do this and that it will make a difference. I don't want to be sitting here a year from now after implementing code change and a huge undertaking by both council, our planning commission, and our staff to be at the same place we are right now, which is somebody telling us, "You can't do that." And that there is room in that school. And I'm, I'm just, like I said, no whole part here. I'm very frustrated. I want to do something because we all know those schools are full. And you can rearrange numbers and you can change faculty spaces into classroom space, but it doesn't change the fact that the kids know and the parents know that the schools are full. And what do we, what can we do as council members? I'm dying for something to do. I know we all are, but I don't want to be back at square one in a year when we did all this work and we still can't actually press that concurrency button like we want to. So, can someone tell me if we can actually do this? Can we? Lisa, anybody?
Your legislators?
Well, I don't know. Has it been used for many years? So, I guess has it been illegal for how many years and?
So, I love Lisa's take on this, on the legal side. I know it's existing in our code, but I want to know if we can actually implement our code and say, and say that this schools are full and then deny a building application or a short flat or a long flat because the schools are full. Is that something we're actually going to be able to do?
I'm not sure, Deputy Mayor. I think that what we're going to run into is if the language, the paramount duty language is a duty that is on the school district, but not necessarily on the city. And I think that's, that's really the narrow question. Does the city have the same paramount duty as the school district does? And that's, that's a legal question that I would have to research. But I think the rub would be the misalignment, if you will, of that paramount duty that the school districts have and then the city's duty to apply its code. And where are those two duties incompatible with one another? I think these are legal questions that I'm very hesitant to try to answer on the dais without diving deep into it, but I'd be happy to do that. And I, I think that's going to be the issue, is the incompatibility of those two duties and what that looks like.
Well, so that helps to answer at least one of my questions, which is, I want to support doing something, but I need to understand that we can actually do it and that it will make a difference. Because I think that's what we're after here. We're not just looking for, you know, random things. We want to implement code and changes that have an, actually make a difference. And the difference we're looking for is not having overcrowded schools here in Sammamish. But I, I'm very concerned about the workaround that I can see here because Sammamish operates with three different school districts and I can already see the numbers in the border shuffling, right? And I, that's undermining what we're attempting to do here. And so, I'm trying to just think through, like, how do we actually implement something if we can so that there isn't a workaround? And the idea isn't to go and stack all the kids over in Redmond just because they can. That doesn't do the kids over there any good either. So, you know, I think one of the things that we do have in our purview here, we're going to talk about it later again, is the growth target. And so, I think that is one of the levers we have here in Sammamish is, is growth targets. And fortunately for us, you know, they're looking for volunteers to take fewer, fewer numbers. So, I think we can have that conversation later, but anyway, that's maybe a non-answer to the question. I really want to support this, but I need more information before I send staff off on an escapade that ends us right back at square one.
Deputy Mayor, if I could add one thing to what Lisa said, you know, from the staff side and from the implementation side, one of the challenges we have is, is we, we have a FT cap. The council put an FT cap on as part of the budget. And the more complexity we add to our permit process, the more staff implication, the more burden on staffing is a resultant implication. And I just want to be really clear that, that if we are now required to start to analyze a development down to a single family home to whether or not there is capacity by reviewing the capital facilities plan, looking at the numbers, and I agree, it's all there. It seems fairly straightforward on its face. However, that is an additional step being added to our process. Further, the more complex our process becomes, the more challenging it is for us to find qualified staff to fill positions. We have experienced a really high level of turnover with city staff. So, the more complex these things get, the more challenging it is for us to recruit and retain employees. So, that's all, those are all peripheral things to consider with this. I just want you to know, I'm just noting because I want to be really clear what the implications are on the staffing end and how we support these types of processes that are put in place.
Okay. And with that, because it's 10-01, I'm going to move to extend to midnight so we don't have to keep interrupting ourselves.
Second that motion.
To midnight?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? I'm going to start out early because midnight's a little late. Okay. And then, okay, we extended for you. Okay. So, first of all, I want to state, you're adding things in, Deputy Mayor, that we never even talked about. So, we didn't talk about wording or moving kids or anything else. So, you're going in a direction nobody, nobody was going in. So, in the Q box, we've got Councilmember Stewart, then Councilmember Ross, and we've completed then two rounds. Councilmember Stewart.
So, I'll be brief. Great. I'll be brief. Deputy Mayor just reiterated what I said, which is, the school districts are going to move kids around and they're going to change the school boundaries to make things work. So, I don't think that our staff can make the determination if there's capacity or not because it is far more complex and it goes well past our city borders. But mostly what I heard the deputy mayor say is that we need to advocate, if there's, if she's asking the question of what can we do, what we can do is help the school districts by getting them adequate funding. And so, one of the things we may want to consider is using our lobbyists in the next legislative cycle to work on changing the school bond to a simple majority instead of a supermajority and even advocating for different ways of funding our schools. The fact of the matter is, is that our schools get funded based on these bond measures and it really maybe should be coming from, from a higher level, from a state level to help with that. The reality is, we are never, the way the funding works, we are never going to get rid of portables, no matter how well we plan, no matter what we do, unless we start having a population exodus from the region. We are going to have portables because of the way schools are funded. And so, we need to fix that. And we could use our influence and our lobbyists and we could work with other jurisdictions to lobby the state to fix the school funding issue. And then, we can build more schools because at the end of the day, all of these school districts need more schools. So, I'll leave it at that. And oh, City of Sammamish people, if you're still watching, pass the freaking bonds when they come up.
Okay. Next, we have got Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Malcho brought up some real good points, especially what we can and can't do. So, those answers are critical. But at a minimum, we need to make sure we fix the internal inconsistencies of the current code and make sure that it is developed at least at a minimum to inform the school districts what's coming in the near term so they can make real-time near-term decisions. Long-term view they have, but those long-term views change in the near term. So, we need to make sure our code update is helpful to the school districts so that they can adjust their school planning and capacity adjustments.
All right. I think we have done two full rounds. Okay. So, with that, we had the Mr. Powell. So, you know, I started off with the, making the motion for us to move forward on that. Didn't really turn into a motion, but with the direction to move forward and reintroduce or reinstate the use of our code. And why don't we see, out of all of them, let's take, can you, can you just do a roll so I don't have to have people raise their hands on the sun record? It's just a direction for them. Direction.
Mayor Karen Moran?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malcho?
I have no idea what I'm voting on.
It's just a direction for him to, to move forward with, with reinstating the use of the code of 21A6D090.
Well, I don't want to reinstate a code that's not accurate. They're using different codes. At first, I think we need to redo the code or update the code as to what David said. or update the code as to what David said before we want it.
That's exactly what he's, that's exactly what he said.
Okay. Well, but that's a long, and I think we have some more questions that I have some questions to answer. So I'm willing to
Okay. So Mr. O'Dell, would you like to start a new motion than what I started?
No, I don't even recall a motion being made or seconded. So I'm confused. Maybe I'm just, because the conversation's so long, I don't remember. But I'm not trying to make any motion. I'm just trying to understand exactly what we're doing.
We want to move forward on getting the code up to date and out and reinstating it.
Okay. So I'm willing to update the code to reflect our current practices. And as I said earlier, I would like there to be short class in there. Right now, they are exempt. But I think David said something about CIPA and how we might want to reduce that. Now, I know what happens when we start doing this. So we start finding other places, other references in the code, and this becomes a much bigger project. So I think, you know, understanding the implications of these would be important too. And maybe we can get on to the nuances of, you know, CIPA and short class at a later time. So I'm willing to do some updating on code, but I still think I would like our city attorney on some few things too.
Somebody make a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we take the recommendations that we received tonight from David and authorize him to go forward with revision to the code.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
I think we've had a lot of discussion already. I'll speak to my motion. We've had a lot of discussion already. And yes, unfortunately, it's not up to us to tell the school district what to do. But at the same time, we can help make life easier for them by controlling the problems they get to deal with. It's a question of whether each individual school at the beginning of the year has 20 more kids than they thought they were going to get or 200 more kids. And it also is something that definitely affects the families of the city. So that's why I made the motion. Stand in my favor. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
We've got Councilmember Stewart in the queue.
I do?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll go. Kristi, you're in the queue. So it's not that I'm not in support of updating our code and correcting any errors there, but I distinctly heard staff come back and say that in order to do this work, something else is going to have to get bumped. So I think before we pass a motion, if we really want this, we need to give staff a minute to go figure out how they would work this in because these code changes will have to go through Planning Commission. I heard Kelly Hulley say even just the administrative changes will be a minimum of six months to get this through the pipeline. So I think we need to let them go and come back to us and let us know what would have to get bumped out before we make this call because it sounds like the staff is executing the process in the best way that it can be executed at this point in time until we make some hugely revamping change that we haven't figured out what that would be, that would actually achieve the outcome that y'all were looking for. So I just don't think sending staff off to do this work right now when it would bump other things in our work plan and not give them the chance to come back and share that with us is not the best use of our authority here. And we should let them do their jobs.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Generally speaking, I'm supportive of making changes to code that what current practices as David said. I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion as the motion was strictly limited to what was on that slide. And again, I would like to add short class in there or have staff revise the CIPA threshold of 20 dwelling. I'd also like to receive information back from the city attorney to better evaluate some of the stuff we talked.
It's an amendment, I'll accept it.
It is an amendment.
Accepting amendment as a further amendment.
So you want to limit it solely to what's on the slide? I have to go back and, can we see the slide again?
No. The main motion was to do what was on that slide. Adding that I would like to add short class in there or look at revising that CIPA threshold of 20. And that I would also like information back from our city attorney.
Okay. Any discussion? We've got a first and a second. We got a motion on the floor. Okay. So Kristi, repeat your motion. We have to.
Mine's an amendment.
Yeah, your amendment, please repeat.
My amendment is to add short class to revise that CIPA threshold of 20 and receive information back from city staff or from the city attorney.
Okay. So the amendment on the floor, is that she read or as she said? And any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. So it looks like it was, it looks like it was 5-2. So can I see hands? Let's see, just the opposed, just show me opposed. Okay. I think it was.
Three was opposed.
So it was 5-2. So the amendment goes with, so the amendment wins? Uh-oh. Pam's showing her hand. Were you a nay as well? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah.
You can't hear you Pam.
Sorry. There were three nays.
Three nays. There were three nays. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So the amendment goes with the motion. The amendment passes. So now we have the motion on the floor with the amendment. And so we have any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that is a 6-1. All right. Okay. We need to move on, guys. Moving on to our next one is the school impact fees.
Mayor David Pyle here again for the next item, Agenda item number 12, school impact fees. So tonight, we have also with us again, school district representatives to assist in discussion with the city council on the topic of school impact fees. We have a short presentation for you, followed by a short school district presentation, followed by opportunity for discussion between the council and the school board or the school district representatives. So as a matter of background, the Growth Management Act requires communities to plan for capital facilities to support new developments and maintain established standards to adequate levels of service. Impact fees may only be used to pay for new facilities needed as a result of new development. The city collects school impact fees on behalf of the school districts as set annually by capital facilities plans. The city adopts each capital, each of the school districts' capital facilities plans on an annual basis via ordinance. The impact fee is calculated on a district-by-district basis using that district's CFP and the included elements. The formula is directly embedded in the city code. The formula is found in Sammish Municipal Code, Section 21A105100. There are two fees set for each district, a single-family fee and a multifamily fee. There is a discount factor found within the formula of 50%. In 1991, King County adopted the impact fee ordinance, which currently, which we currently use with the formula that is currently in place with the discount code that is currently in place. Sammish adopted this structure in 1999 when the city incorporated. The existing formula and discount factor are used widely across the state. Factors for impact fee calculation include the number of costs, the number and cost of growth-related facility projects, the student generation rates, which are the number of students that come from different types of developments. There are credits for school construction that can be put towards planned projects. There are also credits for taxes. So that's a real quick overview of school concurrency. I think the most important point of discussion from this evening is the formula that is embedded in the city's code and the factors that are used in determining the impact fee and the discount factor that is included within that code-embedded formula. And with that, we'll turn it over to the school districts. I don't know if they would like to share their screens. Happy to assist in any way.
Thank you, David. This is Denise De Farm again, and I would like to share my screen. And so I think I need permission to do that.
It might be a gray icon down.
Yeah, I can't share her screen.
Are you able to look on my screen now?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. So let me go ahead and start. And recognizing that your agenda is packed and wanting to be efficient, David touched on a couple of points in my presentation as well. I'll try not to be too repetitive on those points. So, you know, again, school district eligibility related to school impact fees is really driven by the Growth Management Act and on top of the Capital Facilities Plan. School districts rely on their local jurisdictions to assess and collect fees for them because they do not have independent authority. But even so, their capital facilities plans must be adopted by the jurisdiction in order to support those fees. And so as you know, the school districts' capital facilities plans are adopted as an element of your comprehensive plan for purposes of meeting the statutory requirement. Really important points are that not all school districts qualify for school impact fees and some school districts may qualify in one year but not in another. And this really underscores the importance of the content of that capital facilities plan and the need to provide regular updates. The capital facilities plan really is a point in time. It's a picture of what is going on, what the numbers are at the time the school district prepares that update. And another reason why they prepare an update every year is to make sure that their numbers are accurate. There is evolution throughout the year. But in general, they need to demonstrate that they have projected enrollment related to new growth. They break that down by grade level and then they compare that with their capacity, which we've talked a lot about tonight. But the point I wanted to make here is that capacity for the school district is based on the elected board of directors' adopted level of service standard. So again, the state has the basic education standards that set a minimum. Each school district sets their, enhances that minimum essentially that what they, what community input has determined is best for their district. That can change from year to year. Then if they've met those two prompts, showing a growth-related capacity need, then they also need to show that they have a planned solution. So they have a capacity project within the six-year planning period. It may be funded. It may not yet be funded. And, but it's important that they have some reasonable anticipation of alternative funding sources in addition to impact fees because by law, impact fees may not be the sole funding source. The calculation that David referred to really boils down to compliance with the statute. And it's determining what is that proportionate share per unit. And this is really just kind of a quick picture of what the larger formula that's adopted in your code is intended to derive. And so you'll see that it is just determining the cost per seat, which is then multiplied by the student generation rate to determine the proportionate cost per dwelling unit. And then those legally required credits reduce the fee to what is known as the unfunded amount. I'll talk a little bit more about this as I talk through this slide, but I just think that that's a really good picture to see kind of how that formula boils down. The impact fee formula that was originally developed and adopted in King County, and that was because they were the first jurisdiction in the state to implement school impact fees following the adoption of the Growth Management Act. That formula was designed to comply with the statutory requirements of a fee that is reasonably related to the new development and represents a proportionate share of new development impact. The Growth Management Act in providing for impact fee authority was very deliberate in terms of wanting to shift away from the previous mechanisms. And that was primarily through CIPA mitigation or through the State Subdivision Act. And that, those two mechanisms required an individualized case-by-case determination that required for every new project coming through, to the extent they were not exempt, that specific care be taken related to those projects. There were also, in that authority, there are limitations with regard to how these can be spent. They can't be spent across the system. They need to be spent for direct impact and also time limitations. But one of the biggest pieces of that is also that there were a lot of smaller developments that were never captured. And so the GMA authority provided for all-new, the authority for a fee to be assessed on all-new in the case of school impact fees residential development. So it provided a one-size-fits-all. I'm just going to pause because I'm seeing some questions in the chat box. I don't know if you want to ask them now or wait until the end. I think I'm first in there and I wanted to wait till the end.
Wait till the end.
Okay. All right. I'll keep moving through then. So the one-size-fits-all has a lot of benefits. It applies throughout a school district. It is something that the school district can derive based upon reasonable estimates and averages across their district. And it allows them to impose that uniformly and without having to look back to that CIPA mitigation individualized determination. But what it also does is it means that the fee as calculated without any discount may not fit all-new development. It would not necessarily be that one-size-fits-all. And so what you see in your ordinance and in many other ordinances, to the extent the formula is embedded, is a discount or adjustment factor. And that factor serves the primary purpose of ensuring the integrity of the calculated fee. And the integrity of that fee is important to the school districts. It's important to the jurisdictions because you want to have a defensible fee. You don't want to have to be dealing with individual project appeals. But just as important is that you want to present a fee that is based in reason and fact. And so the discount helps to assure that. Now, there are different discounts in different jurisdictions and some jurisdictions don't actually embed the code within their, or embed the formula within their code, but rather they look to the school district to present that fee to them. Most districts, I'm not aware of any school impact fee across the state that does not have some amount of discount. And some districts add an additional discount beyond code provisions in some cases. Now, there are cases where there are much lower discounts. And there, and the example I will use is your neighbor, the Riverview School District in the cities of Duval and Carnation. They had a conversation several years ago about using something other than the 50% discount. They started first with the question of what is the absolute lowest that we can go? The absolute lowest in any case, and this is without diving into fact-specific, would probably be a 10% just because you need to have some cushion for purposes of those averages. And the averages that I'm talking about are estimated school construction costs, estimated land value, student generation rate averages, which we talked about during the concurrency discussion. Those are from across the district. And then average of this value to, I guess, discussion, those are from across the district, and then average of this value to identify the appropriate tax payment credit. And so Duval and Carnation, in concert with the Riverview School District, took quite a bit of time to talk about what would be best for their community, and the end result of that was the Riverview School District feeling comfortable because they are a smaller district, they primarily serve just the two cities, they have some unincorporated King County growth, but primarily the two cities, and their demographics are fairly consistent across their entire district. And so looking at their plan at that point, they felt comfortable going to a 25% discount. And the cities in those two cases actually don't have the code within, or the formula within their code, so they didn't make any code amendments, but they looked to the district to make that recommendation and to revisit it every year to make sure that there was a comfort level with that 25%. Now, contrasting that with the two of the districts you have here tonight, Lake Washington and Iverclaw have very large geographic areas and don't necessarily have consistent demographics across their district. So those two districts might feel that a 25% discount doesn't give them the same comfort level of a smaller district like Riverview. And I just go through that analysis to demonstrate that it really is an importance of that integrity of the fee when we talk about that discount. And then ultimately, the goal is to get this one-size-fits-all that really allows the school districts to be able to implement this fee moving forward and have a amount that can be presented to their board of directors, recommended to each of their jurisdictions, and then implemented accordingly. And that turns us to the approximate timeline for developing and approving the CFP, and this is something that city staff had asked us to walk through for you so that you have the context of this process. We're starting right now to prepare updates to those capital facilities plans. Again, this is an annual exercise because it is just a moment in time when they're looking at current capacity, current projections, and we know that those change from year to year and often within the year. They will go through this process for the next couple of months, provide a draft capital facilities plan, they will conduct CIPA review for non-project action. That will include notice and an opportunity to review by members of the public. Their board approvals typically are in May and June of the year. That's, again, a public process. And then ultimately, that goes to the jurisdictions. For Snoqualmie Valley and Lake Washington, they have four jurisdictions, Iverclaw has six, and so the first jurisdiction who comes in line and who really is driving a lot of this timeline, because we want to make sure we're meeting everyone's timeline, is King County. They have a school technical review committee that meets in June. That committee reviews the capital facilities plan, reviews the fee, and validates that from the county's perspective, they're compliant with the ordinance. And then following that, each individual jurisdiction will review that typically in the fall, September to November, with fees effective in the following January. And that all I have, and happy to take questions, and of course, the school district representatives are here as well.
Okay, well, we do have lots of questions for you, so we are going to back up, and David Powell, did you have anything else that you were going to add?
I do not at this time.
Okay. Okay, so let's go back up, and I believe the first one that I have here is deputy mayor.
Thanks. I don't think I have questions. I more have statements to make relative to impact fees. The city of Sanish adopted verbatim the King County code when we incorporated in 1999 and never touched it since. I did a side-by-side in the summer of 2019 between our two codes, and they are identical, where the city of Sanish simply placed its name where it said King County. There is nothing in state law, in King County's code and our code, that prohibits us from collecting a school impact fee that reflects an undiscounted fee as calculated in anyone's capital facilities plan. We heard their city attorney say that she would recommend that we don't discount by anything less than 10% to account for the averages used in the formula. And that's fine. I'm not looking to go to an undiscounted fee, but as I stated previously, we aren't discounting our road impact fee, and by discounting the school impact fee by 50%, we are shifting the burden for what ultimately becomes part of the package that is used to build capital facilities for schools from the point of impact, which is the new house that's being constructed, to the taxpayer. And I feel like that is an unfair burden for our taxpayers to be carrying. So I would like to see us shift our formula, which, not the school district's formula, I want to be clear, I'm not touching their formula, but in our code, our language says divide by two, and I think that we ought to be doing a different discount to reflect the balance and where the impact is coming from the new development, and yet we're shouldering our residents with a higher cost for capital facilities because we're not collecting it at the point of impact. And inherently, I have a little bit of indigestion about that. I've been pushing on this since I got on the city council, and I think the time is right to make a shift, and I'm not suggesting 10%, I'm just suggesting something closer to maybe what Carnation and Duval have done at 25%. And before we start going crazy about what does that mean, you know, if you look back a few years ago, and I'm looking at an example on my computer, where, you know, the Lake Washington School District calculated their impact fee and at a total cost for all grade levels at $36,644. If you add in the temporary facility cost, that goes up to $37,300 per dwelling unit. So they remove out credits for the state matching fund and estimated taxes that new homeowners will pay on existing school construction bonds, and that's where you land on that final calculated fee, which a couple of years ago was $24,587, and then we just drop it in half. And again, if the fee and the burden is 24,000, why are we dividing it in half? And the argument that, well, you're going to make the houses more expensive because it's, you know, the cost will end up making the home slightly more expensive, but we're talking about by a couple thousand dollars. It's not the difference maker between making the house affordable and unaffordable. It's pennies on the dollar when it's embedded in a mortgage, and I'm not trying to minimize, you know, a couple thousand dollars, but the reality of new homes being constructed, and this is on new construction only, and the numbers that I gave you are for single-family units, not for multi-family, those are always less, is that go try and find a new home being constructed in the city of Sanish for less than $1.2 million. A couple thousand dollars is not going to dissuade someone from purchasing the home or not, is the reality of it, and I think it would be good to shift that burden, and so, you know, I think that 25% discount that has been adopted by Duval and Carnation is an admirable goal for the city of Sanish as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Trane.
I just wanted to thank the school districts for your time, for the energy that you put forward to bring forth a presentation to us, and I look forward to working with the three districts as we move forward, so I really appreciate all that you guys do bring to the table. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to maintain the status quo of the current school impact fees as explained in Exhibit 1 of the SMC Chapter 210.105, school impact fees.
I'll second that.
I'd like to speak to my motion, if you don't mind.
Sure. Please speak to your motion.
So based, thank you. So based on what I've read and how I've been thinking about this thing, the, one, it's not our sandbox, so we should stay out of it. Two, that was my school reference, okay? Two is that this was adopted on November 2nd of 2020, so we're kind of a little bit behind the game, and so if we want to make any impact in the near future on impact fees, we should get involved in talking to our school districts from this point on so that when King County comes to them in June and says, here's what we're doing, we can then talk with our school districts and then look at this for next year in November if we'd want to move forward with making any kind of change to the impact fees. Thank you very much for your time and consideration of my motion.
Okay, chat box, hang on.
Given the fact that the motion on the table, I'm going to pull the comments and questions I was going to ask, because at this point, I think they are probably not.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. I just have three, well, four questions, I think. One, you stated that the discount is the same across a school district. So is it possible for one jurisdiction in a school district to have a different discount? And if so, does that mean anything to the school district? Does that create any kind of an issue?
So I will, I'll tackle the question and then also ask the school districts to weigh in on the latter part of your question. The first part is that currently, they, each of the school districts are in jurisdictions that have the 50% standard in place, so the answer is yes. Currently, all of them employ that same discount across their district. There is the ability to have a different discount within a jurisdiction so long as it's uniformly applied, and this is more of an issue of local taxation, and so that does exist, and there are, in fact, school districts in our region who have that happening. For example, the city of Pence has capped impact fees, and so they have a greater discount. The various school districts, and I believe there are four in the city of Pence, for purposes of the city of Pence, have one fee, in their other jurisdictions, they have another fee. Similar case happens in the city of Auburn, and so that ability is there. I would say, this is one where I'd like, oh, go ahead.
So just to get clarification, so when you say it's uniformly applied, it just has to be uniformly applied within the city, not within the district?
Correct.
That's what I wanted to understand. Okay. And then, I'm sorry, you were going to defer something to the school district?
Yeah, I was just going to, and I see Barbara has her camera on, and maybe talk about the school districts and having different fees in jurisdictions, I think is what she's going to respond to.
Yeah, I'll just answer that question. I mean, again, I think as Denise said, it's legal, it is happening other places, it just becomes a challenge for districts to explain the differences, and ultimately, that would be up to the city to do that. But, you know, again, we calculate the fee for our school district, and then jurisdictions make decisions, we would have to, you know, be able to explain that.
Excellent. And, you know, I just, I mean, for the record, I'm all about whatever gets you guys more money, so if there's a way to raise the school districts more money, I'm all for it. I just want to make sure that if at some point in the future, because I think the council and Trane's point, we don't actually need to decide this right now, but since you're here, we might as well get our questions answered so we don't belabor this later. Do you see any issues if we were to adjust our discount down?
I mean, I think, again, the fee is, again, historically, it was done with a coalition of builders, cities, the county, school districts, so there was involvement by all interest groups, and so we do know that when fees go up, that there are other interest groups that have concerns about those fees. So that would be my only, you know, wonder, is the impact on other interest groups.
And if we, if we changed the discount and there were people who have issue with that, would you, the school districts, have to defend it, or would that come to us because we changed the discount rate?
Are we going to let council answer that, Denise?
Yeah, I will answer that, and I'll just follow up on what Barbara's comment from more of the legal perspective, which is when these school districts are preparing their capital facilities plan and impact fees, are very concerned about having a defensible fee, and it goes back to the discount helping to alleviate vulnerabilities that may result based upon the use of those reasonable estimates and averages. And that's going to be very school district-specific. You know, I use the Riverview School District example, where they got to a point where they were comfortable based upon their fact-specific circumstances, and so it really will depend on the school district and the content of their capital facilities plan for purposes of determining if there is a vulnerability. And to your question about liability, under the current interlocal agreement, which I know was included in your packet, the school district is obligated to defend and indemnify the city should somebody challenge the fee, the substance and the content of that fee. To the extent someone is simply challenging the ordinance, that would, that's more of a gray area, but would also, but would more likely than not fall within the city's purview.
Okay, so, sorry, I was just trying to tease apart that answer. So if we change the discount, you're thinking that would probably fall to us because that would be us changing our ordinance, not the formula?
Yeah, not necessarily, and I apologize for making that answer more complicated and unbelievably heated to be. The actual fee and whether that represents a proportionate share of the new development impact will be the district's obligation to defend regardless of whether or not it is dictated by the discounts adopted in your ordinance. And I say that in context of, under the existing interlocal agreement language.
Okay. Well, so again, so based on those answers, I would have to say, I think I agree with councilmember Trane that this is the school district's sandbox, to use his analogy there, and I would look to the school districts if they're the ones that are going to have to defend this to give us that guidance. If they feel like we can make this change, I'd be totally supportive of that, but if this is something that they're going to have to spend their legal dollars to defend, especially if we are going to be targeting near-zero growth in the near future, I'm not sure I want to create any kind of legal issues for the district if it's not going to raise enough money to offset the headache that it would create. So I think I'd have to support councilmember Trane at this time, but would encourage the school districts if there is a way that we can help you raise more money to let us know.
Okay, deputy mayor, I'm going to make sure that everybody's got their first round in first, so councilmember Ross.
Oh, but this is on the motion, so I haven't had a first round on the motion.
Okay, well, we still haven't had everybody go around, so I usually try to make sure everybody gets.
No, I understand, Mayor, but we're speaking of a motion, so on first round on the motion, I have not had an opportunity to talk.
Okay. Oh, okay. I think you did, but okay.
No, I spoke before he made the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I want to clarify something because councilmember Trane's comments made me think that maybe he didn't understand my comments, because what you said is that we need to get involved in the formula before November. No, 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 no. We don't have anything to do with that formula. That is all the school districts. When you talk about the sandbox, 100%, that is their sandbox. This is our municipal code, and this is our
municipal code. And this is our sandbox. And right here, it says divide by two in our code. And this is what I'm trying to remove, because every year, the school districts go on the unit capital facilities plans, and they're doing those next month. They'll adopt them next month, and then we won't see them until November. So, if we don't change the formula and the discount now, we are going to adopt their, their formula, and then we're going to divide it by two by applying our code to their formula. So, I'm not touching their impact fee calculation. This discount isn't questioning their formula or how they arrive at it. But per Denise's own email to the Riverside School District, she says that I would recommend strongly that any fee adopted by the city be discounted by at least 10% to account for the averages used in the formula. So, the discount is to account for the averages used in the school district formula. If there is a 50% swing in their averages in the formula, that's a little scary. I think we can shrink that. I have faith, based on what I've seen in the school districts and their ability to arrive at a pretty accurate impact fee calculation. What I'm saying is that I think we would be wise to not divide it in half. Using the same example that I did previous to the motion being made, that impact fee was calculated at $24,587, and then we divided it in half. So, then what we asked them to pay was $12,294. What I'm asking is if we did 25%, then we'd be asking them to pay an $18,440 impact fee. So, I, I just wanted to clarify that this is going for, we're not retroactively going back and saying, oh, no, 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 you have to pay more. Not in at all. This applies to all future capital facilities plans that the districts bring to us. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And to that end, I will not be supporting the motion.
Okay, now Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, I'm listening to what Denise described as the discount, to put it, a defensible amount, which implies that the amount of the standard size fits all, for lack of a better term, rate, is too high. Well, we talked about review, that is 10%, because it's within the averages. And I really think it's important that we consider the problem of over-discounting it. And I think we need to look at a lower discount. Because all we're doing is shifting the burden of the tax from new development and the owners of those, or buyers of those homes, to the rest of those in the district who have to fund a bond. So, the capital facilities plans requires a, a larger bond that's shifting from the impact fees, those who actually impact or increase the needs. So, I, for that reason, I do not support status quo right now.
Okay, well, my turn. So, one of the things that David Pyle told us to do was to contact our school board members and to talk to them. And, and so I did. And what I heard was that this is, this is their sandbox. And they consider it to be their sandbox. As I was told, we don't come and tell you how to run your fees. So, I think if they came to us and they said, you know what, it'd be better if you up that part of the fee, if you did this, you know, it seems to me that in the letter you showed from Denise to the Riverview, she actually told them to change the percentage. And if she came to us and asked us to do that, we would do it. But she's not. And so, it's, to me, it's not our sandbox. And I think what I'd like to do is, you know, work with them and talk to them and tell them we're concerned. But that's why we have school board members. And so, I think we have to trust their judgment, that they know what they're doing. And so, I'm gonna, I will vote with motion. Next is Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. The sandbox argument is interesting. I do agree with the contention that having low impact fees helps sell houses. It generates kids, but also puts more, a higher percentage of the burden on the existing homeowners who keep paying and keep paying and keep paying. And that's always bothered me. I am kind of curious, so as I'm looking at page 132 of the agenda item bill, where the school districts, single family per unit and multifamily per unit, fees are laid outside by side. And it's a classical district. Multifamily comes in 66% of single family. Lake, Lake Washington, 18% of single family. And so, Still Valley, 45%. Could someone tell me why Lake Washington is so much lower?
This is Denise. I, I'm sure Barbara will weigh in. I'm getting my phone. So, each school district's capital facilities plan is based upon the specific facts within their district. They all will have different growth-related needs and different growth-related projects, and different construction costs, different land costs, different student generation rates. And so, all of that information within the capital facilities plan is used to drive forward that impact fee. And Barbara, you might want to get into the specifics with regard to your fee as related to the two other districts specifically.
Yeah, I can talk about, and we talked about this a little earlier in the day, about the differences between our multifamily student generation rate and ISACQUAD. So, our student generation rate is about .15, you know, 15 students per 100 multifamily units, where ISACQUAD is about 461 for multifamily. So, that is the primary driver of why our impact, multifamily impact fee is much lower. If we had ISACQUAD, if Lake Washington had ISACQUAD student generation rate, our fee would be about $11,000.
Which, thank you very much. I have trouble swallowing that. I, I think your generation rates are, as I always say, understandable, particularly for a community that likes to manage. So, I'm having a little difficulty with that. Also, when I look at the single family per unit rates, they are much more aligned with the ISACQUAD, you're lower, but not, not, you're 15,000 versus 18,000. When I look at you guys versus ISACQUAD on the multifamily side, it's basically a six to one difference. And, you know, to me, that just doesn't smell right. So...
It's all about the, that's the, it's all about the housing mix.
Jake, what did you say?
It's all about the housing mix, Tom. I mean, our, our multifamily rate, generation rates driven by the two, three, four bedroom stacked condos in the Highlands for the north part. You could see that the, we have large multi, multi-bedroom, multifamily units. And so, that drives the, you know, the amount more generation rates. And I used to, ISACQUAD, 10, 15 years ago, we had very similar generation rates like Washington. But over time, given the housing, it's all about the housing type, that's really driving the generation difference.
Yeah, I'd like to see the data behind both of those. Because I gotta tell you, I think that a lot more kids in some of our apartments here than we, we are getting credit for on this analysis. But again, I'm gonna wait for the population data to come out and do a deeper dive in it.
Yeah, and the data is...
The other question I have is for everybody. What percentage of your construction costs are covered by levy versus impact fees?
Let me answer your first question. The data around the multifamily generation rates is in our capital facility plan. So, it's detailed how those, how the student generation rates are calculated is in the capital facility plan. And then for us, I haven't done the math recently, but it's about, impact fee, actually, Jake, do you have it off the top of your head? I'm gonna grab something.
Um, I think last time I looked, the program started in 91 or 92. I think it's about 58 million. And during that time, we probably built about $1.8 billion worth of capital improvements.
So, 68 million versus 1. something billion?
Yes.
That tells me you're really putting it on the back of the existing taxpayer.
Well, I don't know if I agree with that assertion, given that, that, um, those are buildings that are built for multi, you know, generational, 40 to 50 year buildings. And so...
Same with impact fees, Jake.
That's the only funny toys we have.
Okay.
I think the other important point in Jake's total number is that includes not just growth-related capacity needs, but it includes all capital projects.
Correct.
Capitalization, et cetera, and then capacity that's needed for existing residents.
Okay, well, if you took a percentage of increase in students, and applied it to the, to the overall capital budget, what's it tell you? What percentage, what percentage of your capital budget is actually related to growth versus replacement?
Um, I don't know, I'd have to do analysis, truthfully. Years like this, I'm actually building a no-growth, which is kind of odd.
Well, this is, this is an old idea here, Jake. This is an old idea here.
Yeah. No, I have to, I have to look at that.
Councilmember Odell, I could also just provide a little more context as well. There's two ways that you can also think about that impact fee. Remember that the capital facilities plan, we only get to look at five years of, of student generation. So, that house could be built, a family moves in and starts having babies, and only the first one hits the school system in that five-year window. So, there, there is still a lot of growth that comes out of the homes that are, say, five to 15 years old. And that, that cost is not captured by the impact fee. So, there is a lot of existing growth that continues to be absorbed by those, those folks who bought their home 10 years ago and are still having kids. If you think about $15,000 of impact fee for one home, you know, even just a site, a portable costs us between $300,000 and $400,000. So, you can think about how many homes would have to be sold just to, to put one portable on our facilities. And so, there, there really is...
Appreciate that. However, the, the fact is, that house will also be there for 40 to 50 years, and continue to generate kids. So...
Right. I guess like, the impact fee doesn't, we'll never get to a point where the impact fee pays for the, the new school to get built.
No, I'm not talking about entirely paid for. I'm talking how much it gets paid for. Okay, I have no further questions.
Okay, before we, Pam, have you, you have not, have you spoken once already on this? Councilmember Stewart? Okay. Before we start in round two, is there anybody who has not had a chance in round one here? All right, round two, here we go. Councilmember Stewart. Oh, Councilmember Stewart, you're, we can't hear you.
Sorry, sorry about that. If I look at, just looking at Lake Washington, sorry to pick on you, but we have your numbers. So, if I look at your 10-year growth number projections from the spreadsheets, it looks like about 3,000 students in total from the growth. So, I, and I guess, looking at that and appreciating that, I'm gonna guess, and I'm gonna, and you confirm this, if you could generate more revenue, if you felt like you really could generate more revenue without creating so many legal challenges that it would not be worth your while, you would increase the impact fees. Would that be a fairly accurate statement?
I think the first thing, Pam, you are, you said earlier, the first thing that we could do is get the simple majority passed. That is what would help us build additional facilities. So, the impact fee, even, even doubling the impact fee is not going to pay for our buildings. So, because it is just a small percentage, it's not intended to pay for the, the, all of the growth. Again, there is debt, you know, we collect, in the last four years, we collected $3.7 million in impact fees out of the city of Seminole. That does not, you know, yeah, can that buy a few portables, but it doesn't build a new building. So, so, yeah, the biggest change that could help us all is to get the simple majority passed for bonds.
Great. Well, I tell you what, I'm, we're already the one stock. We have a lot of other agenda items. If there's anything else we can do, if you want us to raise this, if you want us to adjust the, the discount, you, you let us know, and we will listen to you and take your lead, and we will support you in helping you raise more money. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. And to add a point of clarification, Mayor, you had mentioned that the quote that I had given you out of the email from Denise DeFarn to the River Valley School District, it was not generated because Denise wanted them to decrease their discount rate. It was generated from Councilmember Walker in the City of Duval, who was having this very same conversation with his council. And then Carnation and Duval got together, had meetings, and decided they wanted to alter the discount for the same reasons that I've kind of verbalized here tonight. So, I wanted to make that clear. It was not generated from Denise. It was, it was generated from the city council, and that is how it came about.
Okay. So, thank you for that clarification. But I think that if we're going to be involved in changing policy or what is happening at the school district, then we should run for school board. And I just don't think that's our job. That's my personal opinion. So, do we have anybody else who wants to speak to this motion before we? No? Okay. All right. So, we have a motion on the table, and we've had lots and lots of discussions. Who was our, Mr. Councilmember Trine, would you please repeat your motion?
The motion is to maintain the status quo of the current school impact fees as explained in Exhibit One of the SNC Chapter 21A.105 School Impact Fees.
Okay. And I'm gonna have you just do a roll call on it.
Okay. Mayor Karen Moran?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malcha?
Nay.
Councilmember Ken Gablin?
Sorry, my battery is dying. Nay.
Councilmember Tom Odell?
Nay.
Councilmember Chris Ross?
Nay.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Kent Trine?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, Mr. Trine, the motion fails.
I'd like to offer a motion.
And here we go.
I'd like to offer a motion that we reduce our discount fee to 25% from the current.
Second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Did you need to speak to it? Or do we have enough speaking?
I'd be good at that.
Okay.
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Call a question.
I am trying to...
We've got a possible amendment. Councilmember Stewart?
If we do adjust the formula, then I think that we should also adjust the interlocal agreement, so that we would have to defend that move and not put that burden on the school districts.
I second that.
And I'll speak to my motion, which is that...
of action which will not raise a material amount of money in terms of building schools, and we will put, uh, costs and distract resources and time away from the school districts, particularly during a year when they already have double and triple the amount of work that they need to deal with, uh, adjusting to the pandemic, and adjusting to hybrid, and getting kids back into classes. And all the schools we build in the world never would have accounted for being able to keep students six feet apart. I mean, we would never have designed schools that way. So, uh, I would, uh, state that I don't think that we should be making unilateral decision almost against the advice of the school districts, and then expecting them to have to defend that in court.
Okay, um, I got a note here from David Pyle. Did you have?
Yes, uh, Mayor Moran, I just wanted to add that this is considered a development regulation, and that such amending a development regulation requires a formal process to be followed.
Oh. Excellent. Okay, so, um, so how would you like us to proceed? If this passes, then we go through the entire process, correct?
That, that's correct, and I would, I would ask for any, um, report from the city attorney on this. My understanding is that as a development regulation, amending our development regulations requires that it goes through planning commission and then requires a public hearing with the city council prior to adoption.
I agree with that.
Excellent, okay. Um, okay, so, um, Councilmember Stewart, uh, made her motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on that? I think people want you to talk to discuss it. Okay. Um, hearing known, um, those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Nay.
Can I see hands, 'cause I can't, and I can't, and I can't tell.
You want hands for aye or nay?
For aye, I can't see, there we go. I can't, I can't see Mr. Odell either. Okay, there we go. Um, and Mr. Gablin, where are you, are you an aye? Are you an a?
I'm an a. What are we?
Okay, so those who are ayes, if you are an a, please raise your hand.
This is the amendment.
This is for the amendment. Okay, so we have, uh, for the amendment, ayes, we have, I believe, two. Okay, so going back to the original motion, uh, Councilmember, uh, Deputy Mayor, would you please state your original motion?
Yes, I, I guess at this point, we'd be directing the city manager to, uh, our development regulations with that discount fee would be reduced from 25%.
Okay, um, not hearing any discussion. Uh, would you please do a roll on this one?
Deputy Mayor Kristi Mauchel?
Nay.
Mayor Karen Moran?
Nay.
Councilmember Tom Odell?
Aye.
Councilmember Kent Trine?
Nay.
Councilmember Chris Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Ken Gablin?
Aye.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart?
Nay.
It's voted three.
And it passes at a 4-3. Okay, moving on. Um, and I believe David Pyle, you were with us with the next one as well.
Yes, uh, David Pyle committed to development. Uh, Agenda Item Number 13 tonight, uh, on your, um, list of items for consideration is the King County Countywide Planning Policies Growth Target Discussion, um, regarding the, the city's current position in the Cities and Towns Growth Caucus, and whether or not the city council would like to, uh, take action to direct staff to, um, adjust the current position. Let me get to this slide, there we go. Um, the initial position that was offered to King County at the February 20, excuse me, the initial position that was offered within the Growth Caucus, the Cities and Towns Caucus, on February 23rd was a growth target of 885 housing units and 10 jobs. Uh, the current position that was presented within the Cities and Towns Growth Caucus on March 10th of 2021, which is presented in the, uh, memo that was attached to the March 9th, um, city council agenda bill, um, was 885 units of housing and 305 jobs. The question for the council tonight is, does the council wish to change the current position and request a different target from King County? Uh, there are some issues for consideration. Uh, the first issue is, uh, we cannot erase or delete housing units, or excuse me, housing or job pipeline units, um, that are currently in our system. We have 661 housing units and 304 jobs in the pipeline. Issue number two is we have 885 housing units remaining in our last CPP target. However, please recall from the March 9th conversation that, um, that with the update of the countywide planning policies, we will see a deletion of the old target and an incorporation of a new target. So while the 885 units remaining in the 2006 to 2035 target are important, they are, um, removed and replaced with a new target at the point of the county updating the countywide planning policies. Um, the next is, uh, we cannot set a target that is less than our pipeline for jobs or housing. Um, so again, that's consistent with issue number one. We, we cannot go backwards on, uh, projects that are already in our pipeline. Uh, issue number four is we should not set a target of zero new housing units, uh, when our future development capacity for housing units shown in the urban growth capacity is currently 483 units, and natural growth will continue. Uh, issue number five is we can set a target of one job, as our future development capacity for jobs shown in the urban growth capacity is one. Now, keep in mind that we have 304 pipeline jobs, so adding one, uh, new job associated with development capacity, uh, is, is, is not a significant increase. Um, issue number six, and this is an important one, um, is if road, sewer, or school infrastructure capacity is added at some level in the next planning horizon, it will be harder to update the comprehensive plan, and may require modifying the city's countywide planning policies target if it is set too low. Planning for minimal baseline or natural growth that more closely matches the urban growth capacity development, or the, the urban growth capacity study capacity and pipeline units is more realistic. Uh, the urban growth capacity study as a, as a point, as a data point for your consideration indicated a capacity of 2,588 housing units and 1,725 jobs when there is no sewer constraint. So the issue here is that, um, the sewer constraint changed our capacity in the urban growth capacity study Phase 4 that was filed with the county from 2,588 housing units down to 1,144 housing units. So the, the issue here is that, as we heard from a public commenter earlier in this evening's meeting, is that if the, the Sonamish Plateau Water and Sewer District were to resolve, um, some of the sewer constraints in the next planning horizon, or before we go through the next comprehensive plan update process, which occurs eight years, uh, which occurs on an eight-year cycle, um, that we, we would be faced with some potential additional capacity that we haven't planned for. So given that consideration, I, I just have to make sure we're all aware of that, that if there was resolution to the sewer capacity issue, and there was additional capacity brought online, and there were additional housing units available, that we want to make sure that we're accounting for that potential in whatever growth target we set. Um, issue number seven is outside interest. There are, there are individuals who own property who are interested in developing in the city, we just want to be aware of that. And issue number eight is we'll be going through this process again in approximately eight years. Um, I, I do have additional data points, however, I feel the council will probably want to talk about it at this point, so I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, we've got, oh, surprisingly, only one on the chat box. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, um, I appreciate staff and David's time with this. We've obviously taken a heightened interest in this, primarily because I think our community's so interested in it. Um, so I, you know, I, I sat in that meeting, I was able to hear, um, the county basically asking for cities to volunteer for, well, you know, the agenda bill spells it out pretty well here that, you know, the cities and towns are only getting 5%, which is 13,985 dwelling units, and I think when they were tallying everything, they were over 15,005 cities hadn't even given their targets yet. That being said, I don't want to, like, you know, underplan, because we know that growth will come, um, but I also, um, you know, calling a team layer here, um, I'm happy to take a slightly lower target. Um, and so I would offer up a motion that we give David some direction, um, with a, a range of somewhere between 750, depending on what the other Cities and Towns group comes up with, but we're, our group is way over our target. So, um, I'm willing to, you know, scale back our number, knowing that we can still plan in our comprehensive plan, um, that will accommodate, you know, if we go over 700 or 750, um, and our, we'll still be able to plan for that growth. And I, I do appreciate David's insight about, you know, sewer capacity potentially coming online, but he also made the plan at the very end, which is that in another eight years, we're going to be doing this again, and we'll have a different set of, of knowledge pieces to break the deadlock. That is not. That is not at my house.
Muted.
It's not my children talking, I don't know if it's there, I'm online, I'm gonna be asleep.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Stewart?
So I don't know if there was a second.
Councilmember Stewart?
Can you restate the motion, please?
Yes, I, um, my motion was to reduce our target, so, um, last week, we are at 850. And what I'm saying is to give David a range so that he can kind of adjust and pivot as he needs, um, while he's, you know, having these discussions, because our Cities and Towns group is over the, the allotted number, I'm saying we should give him 700 to 750 to work with, and to adjust based on what he's getting in the room.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion? Okay, so I'm gonna, there is, yes, you can speak to, Kristi, would you like to speak to your motion?
Mayor?
I didn't hear, somebody said something, and I did not hear it.
We do have a motion and a second.
Uh, we do, Councilmember Gablin, second.
Well, hold on, we haven't had a chance to ask any questions on this at all. If there's a question to be called, we have to take a vote.
Yeah, you gotta vote.
Oh, wait a minute, I have.
The, the question is, is do we have a mayor here? I mean, yes, I can conduct the meeting, but it'd be nice to know if she dropped off or what happened.
Do we have City Hall?
Hello, can anybody hear me?
I see Karen there, she's muted.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
She has no mic.
Okay.
I think we have to wait till we get City Hall, that may not be, um, out there, that we are no longer at public meetings potentially.
Yep. Damn it.
Please enter your access code followed by the [beep].
Okay, we hear you, Rita.
Okay.
Karen, do we have you?
Yeah.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, Karen, can I please update you as to where?
Yes, tell me where we're at. I heard the first and the second.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded, and then we've had the question called, so our next step is we take a vote on whether we're calling the question or continuing on.
And someone called the question when they're not in the queue? Or do we go through the queue, and then they have to wait until it's their turn to call the question?
I'm gonna have to default to the mayor, she's back up.
Um, well, actually, we've done it both ways. So what we're supposed to do is when the question's been called, we have to, we should take the vote on whether to call the question. So, the question on the.
But can you jump the queue? What are Robert Rule's orders? Can you just blurt out, call the question, or do you have to wait your turn in the queue?
Well, you're supposed to be noticed on the floor, so, actually, you have, you're supposed to be noticed on the floor. Fortunately, you would never have been noticed by me anyway, because I couldn't get in there to do anything.
But there is already a queue, so if someone wants to call the question, they need to get into the queue and be recognized by the chair.
Okay, so Kristi, I don't know who, you would have been running the meeting.
I had recognized the call the question, I don't even know who it was that called the question.
Okay, so you recognize the call the question? Okay.
I heard it, I don't know who it was. I'm sure that I'm going to be happy to tell us, but again.
All right. You know, let's, um, I don't know, and I don't even have the queue, the chat open, so let's, uh, take a vote on to call the question or not. So all those in favor on calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Um, opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Okay. All right, so it looks like.
Well, David, I guess you never get to hear your additional data points.
Okay, so it looks like we will be calling the question. Um, can somebody please restate what the, I missed that part.
Yes. Yes, Mayor, the, the motion on the floor is to give David direction to go from 700 to 750, based on what he's hearing in the room, with the Cities and Towns group.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry I missed discussion on that. Okay. All right, all those in favor, um, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
6-1.
Okay, council.
Oops, next up, and Mr. Pyle, I think we're actually done with you, and you can go, actually go to bed. Um, okay, next up, we've got the Issaquah Falls City Road, and that, and that, oh, maybe not. That is the, um, is that Jeff? Ah, there he is.
It is, Mayor. Um, good evening, I'm Adam, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, uh, City Council Members and City Manager, this is Jeff Elock, Public Works Director. Tonight's agenda bill is regarding the transportation project known as Issaquah Falls City Road Phase 1. We are seeking authorization to increase the budget, project budget, to cover all known cost overruns known to date. Our focus is to inform, discuss, and seek council authorization for additional project budget authority. In April, we plan to come back before the council to discuss fund balance cash flow issues occurring in Fund 340, the capital fund for transportation, of which this project is a part of, but that's not the focus of tonight's meeting. Uh, tonight, I'll be the first speaker, um, on this item. Um, I will have presenting Jed Ireland, our interim city engineer, will be discussing, uh, some of the items when I get towards the end of my slides. We also. We also have finance director Aaron Antin available to answer questions as well. So let me start. The project has endured numerous twists and turns from concept through the design phase and now through construction. We've had countless challenges with franchise utility issues. We've also had changes in management and leadership in the department, and that has, based on their leadership, past practices have changed since then. We've also had several project managers, and their leadership styles have contributed to some of the complexities we face in attempting to figure out all of the issues in this project. I am grateful that Jed Ireland has stepped in and is functioning as a third project manager for this project, and he's been doing so since November of last year. We also appreciate the time and energy that Lochner, our construction management firm, has put forth in managing the changes during the construction phase of this project. We also have negotiated in good faith with the contractor on the project for various change order and impact issues. Our city project team, including special legal counsel, have stepped up to dig deep into the issues and are working hard to be transparent, precise, and upfront when attempting to address all of these issues. We also appreciate the patience of the city council as the, as the council has demonstrated, as we try to share in the simplest terms a very complex set of circumstances. Please note that last month, during season three's meetings, we continued the discussion on project schedule, past change order impacts, impacts due to new unforeseen conditions, and/or franchise utility and pending change orders that are before you tonight. We've had numerous internal staff meetings and performed a detailed review of project costs and issues known to date. So that's what I want to do, is walk you through where we, where the project costs originated from the beginning, at least, as I understand them, and that might not be going super far back into time, but at least to 2016, as I understand the project costs getting to here. And then I'll have Jed interject on the last slide that I bring up. And then lastly, we will be looking for a motion from the council to increase the project budget authority, approximately $3 million, bringing in the total budget authority for the project in the neighborhood of $35 million, and I'll go through those members here now. So I'm gonna share my screen if I can. Here you go. Let me know when this comes up, if it does. It's up, thank you. Okay, so the project got started, well, it started, you know, some time ago, but when we authorized in the design phase of the project, the design costs were in the neighborhood of around $3 million. There's a council action taken in April or March of 2016 towards the design phase of the project. With the right-of-way phase and miscellaneous expenses totaling another $1.4 million, that brought the project in the neighborhood to a $4.5 million project with just design and right-of-way. Whoops, here we go. Being tricky here. At bid award in 2019, we had a contingency on the project as well as construction management services that brought the total project authorized amount up to $30 million for the project at bid award. During 2020, we had three key change orders that were brought back before the council, one for approximately $1.6 million of utility impact claims that have occurred on the project that we are working with legal counsel to develop the background to go after and seek reimbursement from the franchise utilities. In December, we brought two items back to the council as well, and these two items totaling a little over $480,000. Those are actually by agreement that the utilities will be officially reimbursing us. But that said, it brought the total cost authorization up to $32 million as of the end of 2020. And lastly, and I'll let Jed talk about each of these items that are on the screen here, there's roughly another $3 million of budget authorization that we need for the items shown here on the screen. One is change order 31, which are various unforeseen utility impacts that we've discussed at various venues with the council last month and before. We do have one item that's $350,000 that was not shown in the agenda packet, but just discovered just last week, and this is the item to continue the emergency services that Ether is providing, and so we need to include that in the project expense. There's $1.7 million worth of a variety of cost overruns, dealing with quantities and so forth that Jed can speak to. We also have additional dollars needed for a construction management team to continue the project going forward. And lastly, we do have a right-of-way issue that's outstanding that we still have to resolve, and the risk of that is estimated at about $200,000. So the ask tonight is budget authorization in the amount of $3,99,290, bringing the total project cost up to $35,330, $35,330,568 as of this date. Given the hour, I think we'll stop there, mayor, and then open up for questions. I was gonna have Jed present, but given the hour, I think I've provided most of the information, and if not, Jed and/or Aaron are available for Q and A. Mayor, back to you.
Oh, good, I see that deputy mayor has put it in the chat box, so, okay. Deputy mayor?
Thank you. I don't even know where to start here. So a couple of questions. We've got, can you say again, we have right-of-way potential litigation risk and you have $200,000?
Correct. We have an outstanding parcel that is still pending settlement, and our original offer was in the neighborhood of $16,000 to $20,000, but they have asked for as much as $200,000, and until that gets resolved, to me, it's a risk item that I put in the budget as if need be. I'm not saying that that's where we're going, but it is a potential risk item that we wanted to identify at this time.
Okay, so can I ask, and I know you weren't here when this was all initiated, but why, if we are trying to get right-of-way, was that not settled prior to us starting this project in the first place?
That is a great question, and I'm not able to answer the detail of that. We did get use in possession, it was a corner, minor acquisition, I don't remember the exact intersection. Jed, do you remember the intersection that we're talking about?
Oh, yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Yes, I know this intersection well, it's the intersection of 242nd. The property take is approximately 1,000 feet, and it's just one of those cases where there, the property owner may have seen some value in giving possession and use, because if that being the case, if our offer is off by more than 10%, then they would get attorney costs with that. So there's an advantage they might have seen in giving possession and use, but then holding out for a relatively large number, and I think that figure is kind of considering, they're making the case of potential development loss. And that's why that number is large.
And we'd be happy to bring back that, or we plan to bring it back into executive session and discuss the, you know, the settlement authority, but for now, we play, we put it as a placeholder, because these are the known costs to date on the project.
Okay.
Known potential costs.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask a theoretical question, I'm not saying I would do this, but what happens if the city council says no? We're not gonna do this. What happens?
What we would advise is that we go into executive session now and have that conversation, because there's a, if we're not able to pay the contractor going forward, then we would face claims and litigation associated with that, and I think we would be wise to go into.
That's my answer, I needed to ask a hypothetical. I think it should be stated, when we, we, the city originally embarked upon this project in Phase One, prior to us ever getting started, when the city's man, which went to go court those living over in the Kohani and a station area, that project in Phase One was $14 million, 14. We are now $21 million over what we said we were gonna spend, and we haven't even touched Phase Two. I feel, I mean, I understand we're in a predicament here with, and as a council member, my back is against the wall here, but we so far undershot on what this project was going to be, and it's a disservice to our taxpayers, frankly.
And we wish we were not the bearers of such bad news at this point in time.
Jeff, I know you weren't here, and I know that we've got different people working on this, and $14 million starting point was, you know, a long time ago, but I.
Yeah. We also have thoughts, if it's any consolation, when we talk about Phase Two, and, you know, we're gonna be talking about the tip and a variety of things, there's a lot of lessons learned and some new processes that we want to talk with council to, you know, to minimize or avoid or not let these things happen again. We're not able to share those all tonight, but we do have some good things to make it better in the future, so to speak.
Okay, next up, I have council member Ross, then council member O'Dell.
Can you help talk a little bit about what's driving the cost overruns at 1.8 million?
Yeah, Jed, can I defer to you on that one, since you're closer to the issue for us?
Yes, Jeff, thank you. Yeah, the, just to go back a little bit, the original change order for the delayed for the bridge construction was about over three months, and that was in January, and the bridge construction was meant to start in January, didn't start till April, and that meant that certain things, that meant that the bridge construction was now gonna be, instead of ending in the fall, it was at that time gonna be ending sometime in the winter. And what that meant was certain, certain things like paving was gonna be extended, you would have that done in the spring, you'd be maintaining temporary traffic control for longer, you'd be now, you wouldn't be able to do the stream restoration in the fall, you would now have to wait through an entire year and do it and complete it to the following year. We're gonna be completing it this summer, ending this fall now. All those costs of maintaining erosion settlement control and keeping flagging control going, and then just certain things about accommodating utility relocations with temporary paving access for traffic, things that were anticipated, those grew a lot of these bid items more than the original bid quantity, and those are what's contained in the 1.8 million.
So initially, we closed down both lanes to tear off the Band-Aid for about $3 million savings, and we're blowing that out of the water now, because we still have the waves.
That's a fair, that's a fair way of stating it. Is that a question, or are you looking for?
I think, I think it's a statement, and it's disappointing as well.
We acknowledge that, thank you.
Council member O'Dell?
Thank you. I'm appalled. I was there for, at the beginning of this thing, and sat through an awful lot of needs dealing with this, and if I'd known at that time the 14 million or 17 million, whatever the original number was, was going to double, I would have taken a different approach here. Having said that, I'm not sure we really do have an option here, but can you talk a little bit about some of the other issues you ran into with utilities, and, you know, what, what were the utility problems? And why were they not anticipated and worked out ahead of time?
You know, that's a great question, and we have had opportunity with the balance of the council to, to talk through a lot of those issues, not all of them yet, because some of them are pending litigation with the franchise utilities that are gonna come back before the council. But that being said, the unfortunate part that happened here is, is that staff and the project team attempted to coordinate with the franchise utilities to get them to relocate their facilities prior to going to bid, and they didn't do that, and then the city elected to go out to bid and start the project with the presumption that the utilities would be able to coordinate and get out of the way, and they were unable to, unable to achieve that, and as a, as a result, the contractor had to bounce his work around, he had massive amount of inefficiencies. When we came before the council last fall, their original ask for the one number was around 2.3 million, and staff was able to negotiate that down to about 1.6, and then we continued to find unintended or undefined utilities in the road up to and including just two weeks ago, and trying to get the utility companies to get out of the way so that we could finish the roadway and begin our paving process. And so it's been an ongoing finger-pointing hassle, to say the least, for this project. And under our franchise agreement, we have that tool to seek reimbursement from the utilities, but I'll be honest with you, I would, if hindsight's 20/20 and I could start over again, I would do this completely differently. I would ask, I'd take a year off and make sure the utilities got out of the way, or I'd seek a special agreement so that we had all this understanding going into it. There was kind of one of these incremental things, because they would come to meetings and say, hey, we're getting close, yes we can, yes we can, and they would, or couldn't. So it's anyway, Tom, Mr. Del, it's wrapped up into a whole bunch of those issues.
Okay, and Tom is fine, by the way.
Okay, thank you.
The history of this city in doing things like this has not been good. This is just the latest example. We had major overruns on Southeast Fourth, we had major overruns on Englewood Hill Road, particularly where we ran into the bridge down the parkway, and then 244th was not exactly smooth either. I think we need to have at some point, and I'm talking to not just you, Jeff, but also the rest of the council and the city manager, I think we need to have a larger discussion about how we run this ship for the future, because what we're doing is gonna break the bank if we keep on. And we'll also get down to, you know, how we face some of the projects we're looking at for putting on, on TNP for the Phase One. We may not want to do everything as fast as we think we do. So.
We in Public Works will welcome that, that conversation with council.
Good. I was on what we had called the Transportation Committee when I was last on the council, and we tried to get into these issues, but it doesn't look like we did a good job, I'm sorry. So I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Council member Trane?
First, I want to just thank Jeff and his staff for taking the initiative to come down and find, you know, take on this project in the middle of it and then move it forward, and just your honesty is refreshing. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that the city council authorize the project budget for this Falls Falls City Road Phase One to increase the amount to not exceed $3,99,000, $3,99,290 for total project budget authorization of $35,330,568.
I'll second that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second, two seconds. Okay, would you like to, do you need to speak to your motion?
I do not.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
No more questions.
Okay. Seeing no discussion in the chat box and a question called, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, unanimous. I think that was the first one for the night.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one up is Okay, the next one up is ADA Transition Plan, and I believe that is Jeff as well?
No.
Oh, that is my, oh, Mr. Sugg.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Sugg, boy do I have, boy do I have things to talk to you about.
It's a little weird being, uh, attending the council meeting from home, but, uh, I'll be there the next time around. So I'm here with, uh, Jeff Ireland, our senior project engineer, uh, and, uh, Jeff Elkish, uh, public director, may pop in as needed. And we're here this evening to discuss the ADA Transition Plan. So let me pull up a very brief PowerPoint I have for us this evening. Okay. So, uh, again, we are here this evening to discuss the ADA Transition Plan and to seek the council's approval of the plan if we're prepared. Uh, as background, the city initiated the project about two and a half years ago, and the self-evaluation component was completed about a year ago. Uh, and more recently, we finished up the draft plan. The draft plan was presented to council twice last year, and it was also posted for public comment as required by the ADA. The final missing piece of information was the amount of money that the city would allocate for removing accessibility barriers. That became clear once the 2122 budget was adopted in November, so we now have all the information we need to put a bow on the plan. Uh, again, quick background, some of this is recaps from what we presented in September of 2020. So why is it important to have an ADA Transition Plan? The most obvious reason is that it's required by law. The Americans with Disabilities Act was passed in 1990, and it required that jurisdictions be in full compliance three years after that. Of course, full compliance within three years, uh, was not remotely feasible, and like us, many surrounding cities are just now developing and starting work on the plans. In fact, somebody from Mercer Island just reached out to us last week asking about our experiences there, starting their own ADA plan, and, uh, Steve Wardenville reached out not too long ago about their plan as well. Uh, so we're in a similar situation. Taking positive steps to provide and maintain accessibility also helps the city touries' potential liability associated with lack of ADA compliance. And most importantly, making the city accessible ensures that those with disabilities are able to fully participate in civic life. And one of our presentations to the council last year, our consultant walked you through a very detailed explanation of the process we followed to develop the draft plan. Next, next two slides briefly summarize that information at a high level. Uh, before any work began, our team collected public feedback at a variety of meetings through a community-wide survey and through a focus group of residents that either had a disability or cared for somebody with a disability. This ensured the city's feedback, or, excuse me, this ensured the public's feedback was captured from the get-go on areas in which the residents were experiencing accessibility issues, as well as the types of areas where they would prioritize improvements. Next, our consultants reviewed the city's practices and standards, such as the public work standards for compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Uh, and when that was done, they looked into data collection, which was really a huge effort during which our subconsultants spent months in the field collecting data on over two and a half of sidewalks, over 3,000 curb ramps, and hundreds of other features in the right-of-way parks and facilities. All that data, uh, collected in the last step was then prioritized according to a system that's described in detail in the plan. Essentially, it relies on two main factors. Uh, one is the severity of the barrier, uh, for, from an accessibility standpoint, and two is proximity to popular community destinations. So for example, a missing curb ramp that's near a school would receive a higher priority score than a minor lifted sidewalk in the corner of the city that's not near any popular community destinations. And then using recent bid caps and plain-level assumptions, our consultants applied conservative estimates on the cost to fix each deficient barrier type. This includes all associated costs to do the work, such as design, mobilization, traffic control, uh, contingency, et cetera. And then when you take that big dollar figure, uh, that comes out of that cost estimation, that's required to fix all the barriers, and you decide by the annual amount of funding that we have to fix the barriers, you end up with our transition schedule. And essentially, this is the amount of time it will take to bring up, uh, all the barriers into compliance. And this, uh, what I just mentioned was the topic of our last presentation in September during the two reviews from funding options and look at how they would affect the transition schedule timeline. And then in November, the council approved a budget that includes dedicated funding for barrier removal in the right-of-way and parks, which allowed us to estimate that transition schedule. And, uh, this is what we'll look at in the next, uh, couple of slides here. The total barrier removal cost is shown here. Again, these figures include the design, construction, uh, management, contingency, et cetera, so it's all pretty conservative. The magnitude of the numbers is a bit overwhelming, uh, we've seen before, but certainly not applying what other jurisdictions find when they inventory their assets. Uh, the question then becomes, what is our approach? And because the 173 million in right-of-way barriers is so large, we look at how much of that, um, falls within the high and very high priority categories. And it turns out that 41 million and the 173 are the highest priority, uh, so that's what we determined we would tackle first. Here we have the estimated transition schedule for barriers in the right-of-way. We have approximately 796,000 in annual barrier removal funding for the right-of-way. That includes nearly 350,000, uh, existing funding. Uh, for example, the curb ramp improvements that we do as part of our overlay program count towards this existing non-dedicated funding source. And then also within this, there's 450,000 in new dedicated funding that was approved in the 2122 budget, and this is specifically earmarked for removing ADA barriers. So you have your kind of non-dedicated funding source and your dedicated funding source. Together, those total almost 800,000. Taking the 41 million in high priority right-of-way barriers, divided by the 796,000 in funding we have available, which is at the timeframe of, of about 51 years. And, uh, as they noted at the bottom mentions, uh, this is the schedule for the high priority right-of-way barriers, which represents about a quarter of the total. So when you're looking at removing all of the current right-of-way barriers, including the medium and low priority, uh, that will take us about 200 years. And surprisingly, this is not out of the ordinary. Uh, the level of investment needed to fix these issues means that cities often have very long removal schedules. It just depends on the, you know, financial capabilities of each city. And our public works director, Jeff Elkish, can attest to this in his prior experience working on these plans for the jurisdictions. He noted this is quite common. Uh, looking at our parks, it's, it's a bit easier to digest these numbers. We estimate about 200,000 in annual funding is available, uh, comprised of 25,000 in existing barrier removal funding, mainly from maintenance activities, and 175,000 per year that was specifically approved for parks barrier removal in the 2122 budget. So you take that, again, in the same formula, you take the four and a half million in parks barriers, divided by the 200,000 in funding that's available, results in a rough, uh, transition schedule of about 23 years. And this would be for all parks barriers, uh, that were identified, not just the highest priority ones that are in the right-of-way. And, uh, our last slide here, uh, this is a, kind of a brief recap of the ADA Transition Plan. As you saw, not much has changed from the last couple of times we've presented to council. The main change is that we now have the approved budget, which was the previous missing link. With that said, if the council feels prepared, they might consider adopting the plan. There is no financial implication associated with adoption of the plan, uh, as the budget for the, its implementation was already approved in the budget. As a next step, staff will move from the planning phase into implementation. Right now, we're working with our consultant to transfer all of the GAS data and project files onto the city's servers. As mentioned previously, we'll then start work on identifying which barriers to include in the six-year removal schedules, uh, starting with the highest priority in the right-of-way, our parks and facilities. There's a lot we don't know right now, as it's a new program, and we will be learning as we get into it, but part of this effort will be to monitor progress, to ensure hitting our goals, and staying on track of our projections. Uh, this will involve status reports and council updates to keep you all informed of our progress, and it's likely we'll need to keep revising the plans as we go forward and see how quickly we're able to move in the real world. Uh, so we anticipate this plan will be a living document. And what would be great to have the city fully compliant in the 200 years I mentioned previously, the truth, the truth is that this is an ongoing program, and what we're looking at right now are the recently inventory barriers. It's kind of a snapshot in time. New barriers will be created and added to the list as facilities age and deteriorate based on environmental conditions, or if the ADA standards were to change in future years. Uh, I know it's late, uh, with all that said, I will wrap up the presentation there and hand it back to the mayor for any questions or discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sugg. Um, okay, we've got a couple in the, uh, chat box here, so first is Councilmember Odell. Oh, first, we need to extend, yes, we are coming up on, we are coming up on midnight. So, um...
Motion to extend.
Okay.
Till one o'clock.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to extend to, did you say one o'clock?
Zero, one hundred.
Okay. A motion and a second to extend until one o'clock. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we got three to four, we're on a roll, we're gonna get this. One of these times, I'm gonna get it. Okay. Um, and then Councilmember Odell?
Yeah, uh, Mike, uh, two real quick questions. I assume the dollars you show us are current year?
The dollars we are showing here are, uh, I believe from 2019, is when we are, we're putting together the draft plan. So we will need to, uh, deflate these numbers for future years according to, uh, an inflationary index, such as the Washington Construction Cost Index, or, or similar.
Okay, some sort of NPD analysis, thank you. Secondly, um, I hope, this is a request as much as a question, I hope we are looking at combining this activity with other things like sidewalk replacement or building modification work in the future, not just standalone projects?
Yes, absolutely, that is a big part of this. Uh, you know, a lot of what we do already incorporates ADA improvements as part of it. So, you know, when we go through, as I mentioned, the overlay program to fix up a lot of our deficient, uh, curb ramps, uh, you know, when we're working in our parks, we fix any deficiencies there. So a lot of this isn't us going out and doing one-off projects, it's part of other work that we're doing. So it's certainly a component.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Councilmember Stewart?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, approve the update to the plan as presented.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Did you want to speak to your motion?
Um, I, uh, no, I think it speaks for itself. This is something we really have to do. I want to clarify, uh, this for Councilmember Odell to catch him up, that we no longer have, uh, a sidewalk, um, gap project. So, uh, that's something we should probably look at restarting, so, um, that's it.
Okay, so, um, we have a first and a second. And, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have second, were we unanimous? Excellent. We're on a roll. Okay, so now we're on, actually on to new business. Uh, so this is the emergency ordinance for amending, uh, this is for the permit for, uh, Tent City. So this is Mr. Sugg?
Yes, uh, good evening once again, my subcommittee analyst. I have Rita Baugh, senior human services coordinator, on the line, and I'm not sure if David Pyle is still here, but he's also been called. And we are here this evening to discuss the emergency ordinance in your packet, which, if approved, will grant a grace period to Tent City Four while the state probably finishes processing their permit. You'll recall at last week's council meeting, staff provided a brief update on Tent City Four and research for a new location for their encampment, which is currently located at Faith United Methodist Church in Kwahani. As we know, due to the public health emergency and Tent City's difficulty in finding an alternative site due to shutdowns and closures, the city council in late September granted Tent City Four the ability to apply for a permit to move from American Peace, uh, to Faith United Methodist Church in Kwahani. And that permit at Faith United is set to expire on March 31st. In anticipation of that deadline, Tent City applied to the city of Bellevue for a permit in February, and they are currently working through the permitting process to relocate at Temple of the Night Torah and Crossroads, which has hosted Tent City Four successfully before. And staff have been in contact with Faith United and the city of Bellevue over the past couple of weeks to try and understand the timeline for that permit issuance. The land use director of Bellevue provided us with the latest status update this morning, which was then forwarded to council. They anticipate publishing their decision on the permit no later than April 8th, but potentially as early as April 1st, and Tent City would be able to move to Bellevue, to the Bellevue site, starting on the date of that decision. And because this is the council's last meeting of the month, staff drafted an ordinance for consideration of a grant increase period while Bellevue Finances issuing that permit. And the ordinance would require that Tent City vacate the city within five days after permit issuance, or no later than April 30th, whichever comes first. So with that brief update, I will turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sugg. Um, okay, so the, uh, first one up here is Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance, uh, zero, uh, two, zero, two, zero, dash, five, one, two, to extend the permit, uh, number TUP 2020, dash, zero, zero, six, five, two, for up to 30 days. Back to you immediately.
Second motion.
Yep.
Okay, we have a first and a few seconds.
And now just to speak to it very quickly, um, obviously, it is a pandemic, and these folks are already homeless. The least we can do is give them another week or two as they're trying really hard to relocate in the most trying of circumstances.
Okay, and I see, um, welcome to Ms. Rita Ba. Did she want to add something to our conversation for us?
Oh, on, on this topic or anything in general? I'm good. How much time do you have now?
Oh, whoa, nope, no time, not tonight. Okay, all right. Sitting that, we'll then call for the vote. Okay, all those in favor, um, of, of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you guys, we've got like three now. Seven, zero, excellent. Okay, CARES Act funding, this must be Ms. Rita Ba. Mike and Rita Ba, okay, Mr. Sugg?
Uh, yes, I think this one is mainly me, uh, but, uh, different folks may need to jump in depending on the questions. During the council's February 16th meeting, some members expressed a desire for more information discussion on the remaining CARES Act funding. Uh, staff understood that the council wanted to consider holistically where the money has been spent so far and where the remaining funds might be directed. So included in the packet this evening is some information to assist the council's discussion. Exhibit one in the packet outlines how the 2.9 million in CARES funding has been allocated to date, and potential expenditures that will need to be covered by the remaining funding. We'll go ahead and pull up exhibit in seconds. Let's see. So this is exhibit one in the agenda book for this topic. And you'll recall that the city was eligible for 2.9 million in CARES Act funding through the State Department of Commerce. The city used this funding to reimburse from the city's contract costs with Eastside Fire and Rescue that were substantially dedicated to responding to COVID-19. This resulted in budget savings on E for Contract in an equivalent amount, and that 2.9 million in contract savings has so far been spent on grants for businesses and nonprofits, internal expenses such as PPE and expenses to ensure that the city would be able to held, or, excuse me, that the city would be able to operate remotely, namely IT equipment. And with those expenditures taken out of the 2.9, we're left with about 750,000 dollars for a meaning. And when looking at some of the necessary expenses that we have ahead of us, they include costs for the vaccination effort with E for and the city's supply, as well as costs to reopen city facilities to staff and the public. The council approved a vaccine... The council approved a vaccine partnership and a local agreement on March 2nd, in which the city committed to reimbursing Efer vaccination costs up to $544,000. As the council has heard from our emergency managers and previous updates, the city will pursue reimbursement for these costs through FEMA, but we will need to spend the money first before we can ask for that reimbursement. And the cost to safely Riocon City facilities, to staff and the public are still being determined, so we do not have a clear estimate of that at this time. So between the vaccination costs to Riocon City facilities, excuse me, between the vaccine costs and the cost to Riocon City facilities, staff feel these expenses will likely account for most of the remaining $750,000 in CARES Act funding. The other big thing coming down the pike and mentioned in the agenda bill is the $350 billion in COVID-19 relief funding that was appropriated to state and local governments in the American Rescue Plan Act, which was just signed into law last week. Preliminary estimates have shown that the city could be eligible for approximately $14.4 million under the act, and it appears that there will be a bit more flexibility in the use of these funds when compared to the CARES Act. For one thing, the timeline to spend the money extends to the end of 2024. However, given the recent adoption of these measures, the treasury has yet to issue guidance on the use of these dollars, so we're still waiting for more information there. According to the Association of Washington Cities, it will take some time before the funds become available to cities. They say that cities will receive funds in two tranches, the first available in 16 to 90 days after the bill passes, so about two to three months from today. Second tranche will be available one year after that. They also state that cities will be required to submit a certificate of need to the treasury. Again, very little guidance available at this point, so staff are unsure about what this entails at this point. We will be keeping our eyes peeled for guidance and keep the council updated as we learn more about this new funding source. Finally, I just wanted to point out that there were two other exhibits in the Packet this evening that includes some background information on rental assistance and some other support opportunities for businesses and nonprofits. With all that said, don't spend too much time speaking, so I will hand it back to the mayor for any questions or discussion.
Okay, excellent. Okay, I'm looking in the chat box here, hang on. Okay, we have one, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Just trying to start through all of the information. Thank you, guys, for reaching out to a lot of our human services providers. When do we anticipate the rent and mortgage moratorium being lifted? And just, you know, reading, in reading through the needs, right, some of the providers were able to give projections, others said they weren't, you know, they were struggling to really come up with a projection, but just looking at, you know, the one apartment complex in Summamish right there, where there was over 130,000 of the ones went rent owed. So I just want to make sure that we are, that we are prepared, and that our human services providers have the funding that they need, so when that moratorium is lifted, we don't have a flood of people being evicted, because I suspect that COVID will not be 100% under control when that moratorium is lifted, and we don't need to send a bunch of people in crisis and potentially re-spike our COVID cases at that point in time. So do you guys have any recommendations on additional funding that these human services providers need in the immediate term here?
Rita, can I jump in first?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, yeah.
And I'll let you respond to the question on when we anticipate the rental moratorium might end, or the eviction moratorium might end. One of the things that, you know, we need to keep in mind, I guess, is that we're not the only funding source, and that's why we included some additional information in the Packet as part of exhibit four, that talks about some of the other, I guess, public sources of funding that are available to businesses and nonprofits. One of the things, you know, we did hear from our nonprofit providers in exhibit three that there are some pretty big backlogs of rent owed in some of our lower-income apartment units. And previously, Highland Gardens, and Rita can speak to this more, she knows more about this than I do, previously Highland Gardens was made current, I believe it was February, January, February. So any back rent owed by residents at that point was paid out by the King County eviction and rental assistance program. So there, it's, there's a few different variety, or a few different sources of funding, you know, there's certainly an impact that the city can make, but when we look at those big rental arrears that we're seeing at smaller lower-income units, there may be other opportunities for the county to step in on some of those. So we're still kind of waiting to see how that plays out, because the county will be receiving rental assistance funds from the state and likely through this American Rescue Plan Act. It's a real big difference.
But isn't it somewhat our responsibility if these are our residents to help take care of those and not to rely, I mean, the county's gonna have to take care of everyone in unincorporated King County. We have another $200,000 left over, possibly another $544,000 if we get reimbursed for the vaccinations, plus another $14 million coming in. It just feels like we should be taking care of our residents, shouldn't we?
Right, and I didn't mean to say that none of that would be our responsibility, it's just we need, I suppose, some further dialogue and understanding of what the county plans to do with their eviction and rent assistance program. Rita, could you maybe ask that a bit?
Sure, sure, no, I'd be happy to. So I know with the county, with the King County eviction prevention and rent assistance program, the last phase, they brought a particular low-income housing complex in Summamish up to date, up to December 31st, 2020, that they allocated. So there are two main functions in that program, it's landlords and it's tenants. And they, the new program is starting in April, and most of the money will be going to landlords with five or more tenants. And so right now, and I do understand what you're saying, Councilmember Stewart, it's for the whole county, and obviously the county's gonna look and see where the need is greatest geographically, but, you know, east King County will still obviously get funds. So, so right now, we don't know, like, how much money's gonna be allocated, and what that means. I do feel like we're in a bit of a holding pattern right now, because I think a lot of, you know, people are thinking maybe their rents are gonna be forgiven, and also, if a landlord goes with the King County program, they are not allowed to evict, and there's certain caveats that they have to follow. So again, I think we're in a real holding pattern, there's absolutely going to be a need, but we really can't gauge exactly what's gonna be forgiven, what the county's gonna provide, and what, you know, obviously as a city, you know, might even the demand for poor us as well, so, so it's a little bit of a waiting game.
So we're suggesting that the county take care of the rents for the people of Summamish?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just sort of saying that, like, also, I don't think we know the normity right yet of, like, you know, of what's gonna happen, so it's, we just don't know. We don't know if there's gonna be any legislation that is gonna, like, maybe protect landlord and tenants. We don't know, we just don't know. I think we're all in the same holding pattern, we know there's going to be a need, we just can't quite wrap our hands around how much of a need there's going to be.
So what do you recommend we do, what do you recommend we do with this money that we're getting, which the intention, if I understand it correctly, is that we should be, you know, getting it into the hands of the people that need it, not just, not just because it's a wonderful, you know, decent humanitarian thing to do to help those who've been severely impacted, but also to stimulate the economy, right? If people have enough money to buy food and to pay their rent, who knows, maybe they'll even spend a little extra money on something, and that will get our economy going. So we have at least $200,000, possibly another 750,000, plus the $14.3 million that will be coming in. So shouldn't we be coming up with a plan on how to best utilize that to help our residents in need and to help stimulate the economy? Do we have, are we working on a plan for how to spend that money? Because I feel like that's really critical, that we get it out into the economy as quickly as possible to help folks, and especially as emergency orders start to get lifted, there will be people who may not get, you know, back to work, and they're gonna need even more assistance. You know, unemployment generally doesn't cover your rent and your food and your healthcare needs, so.
Sure, I think city manager Dave Ruda and I have spoken a little bit before, and something we've discussed is certainly laying out and creating a plan for the use of this $14.4 million. And I don't know if David's on the line and wanted to add anything further to that.
Yes, we're still waiting for the guidance to come out, and to get summaries on where we're at with this. $14.3 million, as estimated by the National Mayors Association, I think it is, is a heck of a lot of money, and I believe we need to set out a definitive budget and define where it is we want to spend that money. But we're not gonna see the first traces of that money, at least for 60 to 90 days, but we should, certainly should start planning for it.
Well, and we still have this $750,000 from last year.
Well, I'm not gonna debate the issue of what we have left, we've laid it out for the council, we have $544,000 obligation, likely to be reimbursed by FEMA. If the council majority wishes to go in there and spend that money and allocate it, they certainly can choose to do that and back it up with just general fund money, but we should reserve, and you need to acknowledge that we need that money in the event we don't get reimbursed by FEMA, highly likely, but you plan for not being reimbursed, and then you submit for the reimbursement. That reimbursement is not likely to occur for about a year, that's FEMA's timeline. On the other $200,000, we wanted to make the council, or allow the council to be acknowledging the fact that we still have expenses, unknown amount, to bring workers back to work in the workplace. We're still working remotely, I plan on keeping people working remotely for quite a long time yet, because I don't believe COVID is over, and we're not in a rush to do that. If the council feels the need to assist the businesses and nonprofits, then that's a debate and a discussion the council certainly can have. It's just our job to make the council aware of some of the limitations that we have out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. The $544,000, if it weren't reimbursable by FEMA for some renewed, whatever amount of that $14 million, we're gonna get, you know, $7, $10, $14 million.
No, no, ma'am.
That is incorrect.
You are incorrect.
That would certainly be able to cover that expense, correct?
No, it would not. You cannot use federal money to be your reimbursement for federal money. It had to be, it would have to be general fund money.
Uh-oh, did we lose the city manager?
I'm sorry? I didn't hear that.
And I don't, I'm not trying to debate, like, that we need the money for that, I just feel like we have this money that's coming in, and we know that it's going to be millions.
Mayor, 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 can I have a point of interest?
Yes, Councilmember Gannon.
She, well, we're repeating the same thing again and again, is there any time limit at all on how long anyone can speak, there's others waiting?
Yes, there is, we're in council.
There is, and so, yes.
I think we need to determine whether or not we've lost City Hall here. So Rita, Karen.
Do you have?
Right, they're clearly gone again.
Uh-uh, can you not hear us? Oh, no.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio controls, please enter.
Will we get City Hall back?
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea.
Sure, thank you.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, Rita, we're in, do you guys still wanna take a break, or you want?
Check, check. Check, do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna suggest that we take a few minutes break so we can fix this here, and then, second thing is, we're not gonna debate the CARES Act funding, so come back and we can, I do have an idea for us to move forward on that, but let's take a 10-minute break, maybe a five-minute break, five-minute break, it is 12:35, being back 12:30.
Karen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so are we ending this discussion on this topic and moving to the next one? Come back, 'cause, I mean, the only person I got to talk with is Councilmember Stewart.
No, we're coming back to this discussion, but we're gonna take a five-minute break, 'cause we need to fix a couple things right here.
Perfect, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, be back in five. Okay, is everybody back? Okay, so council, just to conserve time on this topic, rather than argue about future funds that we don't know what to do with, and rather than debate what to do with the funds that are left, why don't we utilize our staff to come back to us with ideas on that, and utilize our Human Services Commission, and they're the ones that we would go to for this anyway.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we postpone for the discussion on this until we start the session in April. That would be April 13th.
I second that.
Okay, hopefully by then we can get some more information from, and we'll have a directional, because right now, we don't even know what we're gonna be able to use the money for. Okay, so, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, briefly, I agree with what you just said, Karen, we don't know what money's coming in, we don't know what we're gonna use it for. We may be looking at another round of COVID booster activity this fall, so there are too many unknowns out there for us to really spend much more time on today, and hopefully in the next few weeks, it'll clarify.
Okay. All right, we have a first and a second discussion. I see, Kristi, I see you in the chat box.
Thanks, yeah, I think Councilmember Odell's motion kind of captures what I was gonna say before, which is, we need to kick this, this is, the agenda bill is on the CARES Act funding, not the new funding, so we need to discuss that in the future, there's so many unknowns right now, but I just wanna make sure we're not laying this at the feet of staff that we should be jumping on this right away. I think this is on us, as councils, to initiate the discussion, which we're doing, saying we need to talk about it in April, so I completely support our motion.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Are there any human services providers that need funding now? We never did get the answer on when the moratorium may be lifted, and I'm worried that there will be people in crisis and a lack of funding, and we're sitting on a couple hundred thousand dollars.
That's a great point, and I will say that we're in very close contact with all the providers that currently offer rental assistance, so we're always kept updated, and we actually had a rental assistance provider panel, our commission meeting last week with the three local providers, hopefully, because it's the four and this is for our community services, they came and spoke to the commission to talk to them about the state of play of what's happening right now. So we are absolutely, you know, in close contact, as well as, like, you know, we're trying to coordinate as well, not, you know, we're just one spoke in this wheel, you know, it's us, it's county, it's our other foundations, it's other cities, and so it's really about, you know, looking at this in a more coordinated way, but when it comes to our residents, we are absolutely on top of it, you know, we do keep in very close contact with providers.
Okay, well, for the record, I think it was, yeah, irresponsible of us to sit on this money now that we know that we have additional funds coming.
We do.
Okay. Uh. Okay. Well noted. Okay, so is there anybody else who's got any comments, questions? Okay. Then, the question, calling the question.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, six, one. Okay, next up, we have got best...
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask if we can move the CARES Act funding, or sorry, not the CARES Act funding, sorry, best interest of kids' lives. If there's nothing urgent about this, we can move this to the next meeting.
Okay, so you want to move this to when?
Whenever is the most appropriate place to plug it in. I mean, sooner than later, but there's just nothing...
Okay, so move it to April?
Yeah, if the first meeting available, it'd be great.
That'd be April 6.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree, too.
Good call.
Okay. Anybody have any problems with that?
I think we need formally vote on it.
Okay. Anybody? All right. Okay, so motion on the table. Did somebody want to second that, or did I miss that?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. I'm not seeing any discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Okay, so the next up is, oh, this is going to be a tough one, guys. Okay, the next up is the possible censure of council, council member, this is the violation of our executive session. And who wants, who wants to start off on this discussion? Do we have our, do we have the attorney on the line?
I am here, Mayor.
Okay. So why don't we start? Could you give just a recap of what the law reads for the state?
Yes, if you give me a second. I'm going to pull up an email that I sent recently to you. And if you'll just bear with me for a second, I'm going to my sent items, pulling it up. And I'm reading from an email that I believe I sent to the entire council on the 3rd of, on the 3rd of March. Mayor, if you would fill the silence perhaps with a few remarks, I will continue to look for it. I apologize. I was, I was not aware that I was going to need to have this up the ready.
All right.
But we'll be able to find it, yeah.
Okay, so this is going to take us back to our meeting on April 2, I believe. I think I have the date right. And this is going back to what was an, an error from coming out of executive session. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, so coming out of executive session on 3/21, if anybody wants to review on YouTube, the feeding, the video timestamp is 5 hours, 5 minutes, and 59 seconds. So upon exiting the executive session, there was discussion about how we were going to select candidates to fill our open position in city council. The pertinent statement by Councilmember Stewart that I feel violated executive session is as follows, and I transcribed this. "I have an issue with that," and this is, let me go back, this is a quote, "I have an issue with that. Just for full disclosure to the public, we kind of cheated and kind of voted in executive session." So Councilmember Gamblin already knew what the numbers were, end quote. So my point on here is, we need to discuss in executive session many items that are, are of executive nature, that should not be disclosed and cannot be disclosed to the public. If we have council members that feel that they've had the right to come out of executive session and make statements about what happened, or their interpretation of what happened in executive session, then we actually don't have any executive session privilege. Everything then is at risk. I don't know if anything I say in executive session is going to be brought out and repeated because a fellow council member doesn't agree with that. So if a council member has issues with whether there's problems in executive session, or whether there being, there's an illegality occurring there, there are stated remedies on how that is going to be addressed. And one of those stated remedies is not to appear out of that session and share what happened there because they did not like the results. So I think the council needs to look very carefully at what our current rules are, what the ramifications are in general for violating the executive session privilege, and specifically in this situation, should there be any ramifications for violating that privilege in this spot.
And Mayor, I have the email I was looking for now, if you'd like me to refer to it.
Yes, thank you.
This is the email I sent to the council. I sent this on the 3rd of March of 2021, and I indicated therein that the disclosure of information learned in executive session is a violation of the Code of Ethics RCW 4223070, sub 4. And this is a quote from Municipal Research. "The AGO concludes that a breach of confidentiality is a violation of 42230704 and 427305, excuse me, 4223050 provides the penalties for violations of Chapter 4223, RCW, i.e. monetary penalty and office forfeiture. In addition, there is also the possibility of recall from office based upon an OPMA violation, see Teeford v. Howard 104, Washington 2nd, 580, 1985, and Henry Roberts 115, Washington 2nd, 551. I would also note that your council rules of procedure, I believe it is paragraph 4.1.5, contain a requirement to retain confidentiality of executive sessions as well."
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, so I'm looking for a direction from council on this of where they, would they like to go into executive session and have a discussion on this?
I think that would be helpful. I think before we jump back there, we may want to extend by about 15 minutes just to cover ourselves. So I get a chance to speak?
And you mean in...
No.
Okay, so, yeah, let's, let's extend the meeting so that we don't run out of time.
Okay. And we extend to 1:30 a.m. just to cover ourselves.
Okay. Okay, who was the second?
Odell.
Odell, okay. We have a first and a second. All, all those...
We're in the middle of voting.
Okay, all those...
Mayor's running the meeting. No, that's the mayor.
All of those in favor of extending until 1:30, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we will extend till 1:30. We, yes.
And one nay.
Yes, so we have 6, 1. Okay. So we are going to be, we are going to be extended until 1:30. And we are going to be going into executive session, and we'll see you on the other side.
Madam Mayor, may I speak before we go into executive session?
You know, I have to, I have to ask what the, what the rules are on, on what we can speak on. So I have to ask Lisa what that is first. So we are going to go into executive session, and I'll ask that question.
I think that privilege is yours, Mayor Moran. It's, it's the chair's decision. It, it sounds to me like your fellow council members would like to go into exec session. And I want to actually make a correction to a citation I earlier gave you. The, the section of the council rules of procedure is 2.6 confidentiality, confidentiality and executive sessions. So I stand corrected on the citation to that paragraph.
Okay.
And so it, Chair, Madam Chair, it's your, your privilege.
Okay. Well, let's go into executive session and...
Like the RCW.
Okay, what is the RCW for executive session, Lisa?
Sure, I believe it's stated in the agenda. I'm pulling that up. And that is RCW 4230 1G. RCW 4230 110 1G. It's late, I apologize.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
All right, can you hear Karen, though? Are we going to do this whole audio thing again?
Can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you.
All right.
Okay, we'll check until 2 a.m.
Second motion.
Oh, come on.
Here, Niall. You can do it, Karen.
No, I got a plane to catch in four hours.
You know, he's got a plane.
Just stay up at this point.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye.
Nay.
Hey, we had three. It was, so it's 3, 4. Yep. Train, yep. All right. So, moving forward, I don't even know where we left off. Okay, moving forward, we are back on to, and who, we are back on to 19. And coming back from discussion on possible censures, is there anybody who wants to start us off on that discussion?
So you want to end it?
I will. I'll speak.
Okay. Who was that?
David, Mayor, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I certainly don't speak censoring or even, you know, well, a censor is a discipline by a council member, but I think, I truly feel very passionately about the sanctity of executive session. And never has it been so blatant as having a council member come out of executive session onto the dais and divulge discussions, even if they were characterized incorrectly. But I feel that it's important that we, as council, take action. And I am favorable to censoring. Councilmember Stewart for the action. You want me to make that into a motion? I will.
Okay, please do.
Okay, I move that we censure Councilmember Stewart for violation of executive session.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
We have people in the chat box.
You're assuming that I can open the chat box.
Here, I can help, Karen. You've got Councilmember Stewart's first.
Do I have the floor, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Oh, I got the chat box. Councilmember Stewart.
Excellent, thank you. I object. This isn't proper. I did not divulge any confidential information. So Councilmember Gamblin read my quote, and no confidential information was revealed. And if you agree with what I said, then the fact remains that we took a straw poll in executive session, which is a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. So either I didn't divulge what happened in executive session, or I did, and either it's the Open Public Meetings Act. Because I didn't say anything confidential. I didn't disclose any information that was confidential.
Okay.
So I feel like I'm aware of anything that's violated.
Okay. Councilmember Train?
I'm going to try to be really calm here, but very first month I got into the council, we went into executive session after I was in a week of training. And legal told us the whole framework for executive session. And the next day on Wednesday, everything we discussed in executive session was out in the open, is out on social media. And I couldn't believe it. I was like, so, so my actions so far, and this is for all of us, by the way, my actions so far in executive session has been very limited. And only when I really feel strong about something, have I ever said anything to the council as to what I really feel about the issues we discuss in executive session. At any time, there would be no time when I come out, similar to what Jason Ritchie did the day before he, the night he resigned, when he came out and just said, hey, here's what we talked about in executive session. Why would those words even come out of your mouth? Those words should not come out of your mouth. We talked about this in executive session? Like, those words don't exist really in my vocabulary. I don't even tell my wife, who I love dearly, about what goes on in executive session. So why anyone would walk out to the dais and then words right out of your mouth would be, here's what we discuss in executive session? So this isn't the first time in, in, in a year, this is the third time that I can, I have evidence that this has actually happened at least three times in the own, in the, in the first year that I've been on this council. So here's the problem that I'm having. The problem I'm having, and fill out a little bit, I missed some trees. The problem I'm having is that we have a tool. It's called executive session. It has a purpose. We do business of the city for the good of the city in executive session. If in executive session, I cannot speak the truth, or my truth, and you can't speak your truth, then executive session is useless. Why would any of us ever want to violate that? It, it, to me, it's unconscionable then for anybody who would want to violate executive session. And what I'm saying is, it's happened three times. Whether, whether what we discuss in executive, executive session is right or wrong, that would be us and the attorney. And then there are avenues in which we can go about to fix that problem. But by coming out and just blatantly violating executive session, to me, is like a lack of integrity then. And so I don't know whether I want, I don't even care. It's the other things. Late, I get it. We're late tonight again. Emotions run high. Issues we're passionate about. I get all that. I get all that, right? But we have to, at least as a body of council members representing this city for the good of it, have to take executive session as kind of like, this can't be violated for any reason. Many a times, I haven't agreed with my fellow council members in executive session. There are times I don't agree with these guys when we're voting. That's okay. That's all right, because the intent of all of us is what's best for the city. And if we start acting like that, then we can honor executive session and use it as a tool that it's meant to be to do the business of the city. And with that, I will say goodnight.
Goodnight, Mr. Tree. Okay, Mr. Gamblin.
Yeah, so I just wanted to reiterate a little bit, reiterate how crucial it is that we feel that we can speak openly in executive session, and to have what was just discussed brought out and thrown out in front of the public, which is supposed to be privileged, makes it very, very difficult to do the city's business. So I, I would support the motion.
Okay, we're going to let everybody go through, run through for one round first, before we start any second round. Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, it's critical, it's critical that we preserve the sanctity of executive session, and a blatant breach of executive session shows a lack of ethics, in my opinion, and it could also weaken the city's position. That's why you have executive sessions protect the citizens of San Amish. That's what the RCW's list as reasons for executive session. And doing what was, was done blatantly on March 2nd is inexcusable from my perspective. It undermines our process, it undermines the council, it undermines the citizens of San Amish. And what's worse is, even when you bring something out of executive session, we cannot challenge the truthfulness of it in open public because it's part of executive session. So this is just a blatant, and it's compounded by the statements of Councilmembers Stewart, so I support censure.
Okay, and Councilmember Odell?
The rest of the council members who have spoken, with the exception of Pam, have made very good points. What happens in executives needs to stay there, otherwise it can be significant damage to the city downstream, and decisions can be made that come back to haunt you, or actions can happen that go against individuals who are in one position or the city as a whole. When I first joined the council back in 2010 as a rookie, one of the first things I did was spend about a morning sitting in the executive briefing room with all the other newbies, being lectured by Bruce about we should do this or we shouldn't do this. And he put considerable effort into the need for, and the sanctity of executive session, and how to treat it. A week later, I was in another session run by AWC, New York elected boot camp, two days thing, same thing again there by a different attorney. So I got from two different sources that there's a certain rules of the road you need to follow if you're going to be a member of the council or representative of your city. So I am not in favor of letting a violation go, shall we say, underawarded.
Okay, and then we're going to, round two here, we're going to have Councilmember Stewart.
Hope they realize Karen again.
Pardon?
No, it is.
Yeah. Okay. Uh-oh, did you lose us again? Uh-oh, hello? Hello?
Unmuted.
Oh, no.
Oh, we hear you, we hear you. There we go.
Oh, hello, hello, oh, hello.
Hi, Karen.
Okay, yay. Okay. We're back for a moment. Okay. Pardon? Yes.
Whatever you said, you got cut off on your sentence.
Okay, well, we're back for the moment. So, okay, we've gone a full round. Everybody's got to speak their piece. We have a motion. Pardon?
Madam Mayor, I'm in the queue again.
You didn't speak your piece again.
I did not speak my piece. Councilmember Stewart, did you want to speak again?
I did, I just wanted to, I just wanted to state that it is actually our legal and ethical obligation to report a violation if it does occur in executive session, and that if there was a violation of the OPMA in executive session, then that is in fact not privileged. And so I will return again to the fact that I did not disclose any confidential information that was discussed in executive session. And if the issue is that what I said did in fact occur in executive session, then we have admitted to taking a straw poll or vote, whatever you want to call it, in executive session, and that is in fact illegal. And that, so protecting the city and protecting the citizens is making sure that we are following the law and not having discussions behind closed doors that are inappropriate. So we are in fact allowed to discuss the qualifications of candidates, we are not allowed to take a straw poll.
Okay.
And I, and I want to find out if Councilmember Tree was accusing me of violating?
Okay, you know what, we're not going to go back and forth, so that we're not going to do.
He raised the issue that it happened three times, and I have never disclosed?
He did not put any names in there, so we are not going to, we are not going to go back and forth. You did say I did not speak my piece, and I did not. And one of the things that bothered me about this is, you can't respond to this. If you respond to it, then the problem is, is you find yourself in violation of the same thing. There is not a way to respond to it. And that's the problem with this, is the whole discussion is, is just wrong. If we, if you try to respond to saying, you know, he said, she said, you find yourself in violation of executive session. It's, if we don't follow the rules, then there's, you can't run a meeting without rules. If there are no rules, then what's the point? It's just, it's impossible. So that's my piece. I just, if you're not going to have the rules, then don't have any at all, and you can't have a society without some rules. That's my, that's my piece. And this is one of those topics where you can't have a discussion because you'd be violating OPMA. Not OPMA, but you'd be violating executive session. Okay, we are going to only finish up what's in the chat box, so if you have one more comment for your second time, get into the chat box. Other than that, we are going to just finish the chat box. And so we've got Deputy Mayor.
Mayor, I think you took the words basically right out of my mouth, that this is a no win, because you can't charge back and say, well, no, that didn't happen, this happened, because then we violate executive session. So I think my earlier point stands that the sanctity of executive session is critical to our functionality, not only to ourselves as a council, which is really important, that we have a working and trusting relationship with each other in executive session, but also to our citizenry as well, on a myriad of topics that we touch on in executive session.
Okay, and then last would be Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, so again, what the mayor and the deputy mayor said, it is absolutely correct. We have to, in this situation, look at the voting by the council members who were in there to determine accuracy of whether or not we feel a violation occurred, and the censure will determine that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and I believe a second. And so all the, oh, could you please repeat your motion?
Yes, I, it was simply a motion to censure Councilmember Stewart for violating executive session. However, I do have a question that's more for Lisa, as we go to vote, Councilmember Stewart has participated in this conversation. My question is, she has a conflict of interest in voting, can she vote or not? I mean, if you say she can, that's fine, but it's a question worth asking, I think.
It would be my recommendation that she not, but I cannot compel her not to vote, so I will leave it at that. I think I can see where this vote would go, and again, while it would be something I think would be a good idea for her to recuse herself from the vote, I'm not sure I can compel that from her.
Okay.
Could I ask Lisa a question?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Oh, thank you. Lisa, so in the statement that I made in, in that meeting, did I in fact divulge any confidential information?
I'm not going to answer that question, Councilmember Stewart, because at this point, your interests are not aligned with the majority of my client's interests, they are not aligned at all. And so I think me providing you legal advice at this point would not be wise, and nor am I willing to.
My understanding is that your client is the city, not the council members.
When my client's interests, the majority of my client's interests are not aligned with one member of the, of the city council, then no, I am not going to provide you legal advice. You've already retained your own attorney, Councilmember Stewart, get your legal advice from him.
Okay, well, my attorney sent a letter to the City of San Amish, and who knew that in fact I did not divulge any confidential information?
All right, you know, we're not going to get into a battle back and forth. We have a motion, we have a second. And so we're, do you want, let's, can you just do a roll?
Mayor Karen Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember Tom Odell?
Yes.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow?
Aye.
Councilmember Kent Tree?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin?
Aye.
And Councilmember Pam Stewart?
Nay.
Okay, so that would be 6-1. And with that, I believe that we?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, how do I, or maybe this is for Lisa, how do I go about requesting an investigation into a violation of the OPMA?
Okay, well?
Again, Councilmember Stewart, you retained your own counsel, and so I would recommend that you ask that question, Mr. Williams.
All right, I will do that, thank you.
Okay. And I believe that is, do we have any more business, Mr. City Manager?
Good, Mayor?
Okay, yes.
Does the censure involve any other sanction?
That is, let's, let's ask Deputy Mayor what her intent is?
After you voted, I didn't provide any, I didn't provide any intent. If another council member has something, they can do it forward.
It did not.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Goodnight.